I told you about that.
I know exactly what you were like.
It's part of like the context.
It's a good thing, right?
What you're saying wasn't a question. No, but my editor thinks you're saying it's a good thing. It's never been.
I mean, who would think it's a good thing?
It was so... I had a shitty... Redmond, Brooklyn, Redmond Plaza, Brooklyn, Mass. New York Times.
I sent you a cartoon which I hadn't seen before yesterday. Actual cartoon.
Yeah, that was old, right?
That is the... That's what was with the top of the article.
They republished it again at the beginning.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So is what I heard true? You want to do this again next month? Because Kirsten, first Kirsten.
Yeah. It won't hold up.
Anything else? I agree. I just set a spotlight shining on her chair and say, "This is for you, darling."
Justin. City oversight of design. Remember they had a big old thing that came out with the scissors and they opened it up and they went after it. You sent me.
John, there's a bug under your shirt.
Yeah, thank you. I got a tin.
What do I do? Zero this shit. You're just it.
This is where you have a call tomorrow.
You go through the tunnel. It's difficult. Yes. It means like a... That is pretty far from the 20%. There's some guys on the... There's like some... There, they're like watching that. Then you're... Actually, it's original. It's like so... I mean, there's stuff to you out there.
Hey, Peter.
Yeah, but it sparks like a hero. There's some elementary schools are good. If you like, it's a point you like, but I think we'd never... Staggered.
No one said one year. We just kept it.
Just like the same square foot house. So we're pretty close to the... Yeah. Yeah, but you also pay more taxes. It's still a better balance. I mean, it's not really how she buy it, but it's good. That's right.
I'll stop by.
I know, it's weird. Yeah. Especially because tonight it was...
Okay. So the first item this evening is a study session on the Facebook Willow Village project. Councilmember Carlton is recused from hearing Item D1 due to a conflict of interest related to her consulting relationship with the company that does business with Facebook. And as I mentioned earlier, we will, given the importance and prominence of this project, I'm going to suggest that we hold an additional study session probably in April or May. Now, I'd like to introduce Principal Planner Kyle Perata and also Mark Munzer. And good evening, both of you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Vice Mayor Mueller. Mark Munzer with Community Development Department. Kyle will be running through a quick presentation from staff in just a moment outlining the procedures that will follow for tonight. I just wanted to briefly mention that, obviously, as you noted, Mayor Otaki, this is a very large and complex project. It's an almost 60-acre site that includes a number of different land uses which will be discussed and articulated. From a staff perspective, just so from your awareness, in light of the complexity and size of the project, we are currently processing 22 other discretionary projects that are also in the pipeline under review, but we recognize that this project needed a different approach from staff in order to provide initial analysis to the applicant and also to better analyze the topic prior to going to the Planning Commission for a study session which happened last month and, of course, this evening. So what we did is we developed a team approach, if you will, from the planning perspective. It is led by Kyle Perata, our senior planner, and it also includes Deanna Chow, our principal planner, who has a great deal of experience in the former M2 Connect Menlo area, and myself. Once the applicant filed the application back in July, we immediately... or almost immediately commenced bi-weekly meetings with the applicant team and brought in a number of different city personnel from transportation, public work, sustainability, and staff, and the applicant have subsequently met almost every two weeks from that point on with very structured agendas and very clear follow-up items for both the city side and the applicant side. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of framework of how we got to this evening and how we have had this project in front of us for a number of months and that we will continue that process as it begins the entitlement review. So with that, I will hand it over to Kyle.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. So as Mark said, I'll be doing the staff presentation for the Willow Village project here for the council study session. So just to start off here, list of the agenda. We'll start with some staff updates and then move into an overview of the project by city staff, followed by an applicant presentation, and then an opportunity for the city council to ask clarifying questions of the applicant and/or staff. We could do staff questions at the end of the staff presentation, or we could hold those for the opportunity to talk about them later after both presentations. Subsequent to that, there should be a public comment period and then ultimately an opportunity for the city council to discuss the project and provide some direction and guidance to staff. So I'd like to start, before moving off of the agenda here, with a few updates. So earlier today, staff was informed that Attachment E of the staff report, which of the correspondence was not included, that was inadvertently left out of the published report. Copies have been provided to the council at the dais. There's also copies at the back of the room for members of the public. In addition, all those emails were sent to the council email log over the course of post-planning commission and study session and publication of the staff report for the city council study session tonight. You know, those are summarizing the report in detail, so I'm not going to go over those in detail here. I do want to provide another update that we did receive six additional items of correspondence after publication of the staff report. Those were also all sent to the city council email log. Just kind of briefly going through them, generally the topics touch on things like support for the project, also identifying the need for pedestrian and bicycle improvements and even vehicle improvements on roadway services and traffic in the area, also traffic impacts and school impacts, potential to the project, and consistency with the general plan, and the proposed number of housing units or density for the project. So that includes the updates. So before moving into the detailed presentation, I'd like to list the key questions for the council tonight. This is an old presentation, I apologize, but we'll work with it. So it should be topics for the city council. Essentially, what we're looking at is the guidance on the location of the cross-site vehicle access, bike-ped access through the site, the eastern Paseo design, and then the site layout and use of mixes... or mix of uses, specifically the density, FAR, and height, along with the proposed phasing plan for the project. The... A copy of the questions is available at the dais for the council's benefit. And so what we have here is the existing site. The site is located at the intersection of Willow Road and Hamilton Avenue, just south of the Dunbarton Rail Corridor. It's an approximately 60-acre site, includes 20 existing buildings that are currently used for various uses such as office, R&amp;D, manufacturing, warehousing. The total buildings occupy about 1 million gross square feet. It's also located directly across from Building 20, which is in the northwest of the project site of the existing Facebook West campus. And so, kind of talked about the existing uses already, but the mix of zoning is important here. So as part of the Connect Menlo General Plan update, the site was rezoned from M2 General Industrial to RMU and O zoning districts with the opportunity for B or bonus level development. And so, we'll move into the zoning map real quick here because that's going to be more helpful for context. This identifies the location of those two zoning districts at the site, so it's a multi-zone site, Office and RMU. And this zoning map here also identifies the proposed street connections in yellow and the Paseo... new Paseos in blue. So, moving on to the overview, as Mark said, we started out in July of 2017 with the application, moved into a series of meetings to understand the project further, and we initially initiated the environmental review just back in February of 2018. And so, at this point, we... The project components include 1,500 housing units, approximately 126,500 square feet of non-office commercial uses such as grocery, pharmacy, food and beverage services. There's also a proposed 200-room limited-service hotel along with a cultural and visitor's center, and then 1.75 billion square feet of offices. Within that, there's 18 acres of open space, approximately eight acres would be publicly accessible, and the office component would be a net increase of 750,000 square feet of office at the site. The proposed project, just to give you a site plan here, kind of is utilizing the master plan development process to aggregate the development potential across the entire project site. So under the zoning, through the Connect Menlo General Plan update, the two zoning districts for this site can be combined or aggregated throughout the site through the use of the master plan process, so development potential can be shifted around throughout the site. What we have here is the basic site layout. The office component is shown in blue with the pink being the mixed-use residential and commercial, generally retail, with the purple being the hotel and then the orange being the cultural and visitor's center. The proposed project would also utilize the bonus level development process or procedure in addition to the master plan development, and so that would allow for the applicant to apply for an increase in height, density, and intensity or FAR at the site for both the RMU and O office zoning districts, also to be allocated throughout the site in exchange for community amenities from the adopted community amenities list. So as part of the overall project, there's a proposed phasing plan. The project would be developed in four phases. Essentially, the first three phases would allow for the occupancy and completion of about one-third of the office and housing units. So essentially, the proposal would be to build out the office buildings but only occupy a third of them approximately in each phase along with a third of the housing units. And then the fourth phase would be the construction of the cultural visitor's center and the And so, the project entitlements, I don't necessarily need to read this list, but a key component of it is the commercial development permit and the development agreement which are required for master plan projects. There's also a request for a zoning map and general plan amendment for the relocation of certain onsite circulation such as the Paseos and street connections, the need for subdivision, and other items such as a BMR housing agreement, heritage removal permits, and an EIR will be prepared for the project. And so, the Planning Commission, as Mark said, reviewed the project of the study session at its meeting on February 26th and generally provided support for the following components of the project. of the project: the site circulation, the eastern paseo, the use of the master plan process, and the proposed mix of uses, including the density, intensity, and proposed building heights, along with the overall site layout, specifically the parking structures and the location of the retail street parallel to Willow Road, and ultimately, the phasing plan that would the applicant propose for the project. The Planning Commission also raised concerns about the timing of the project and the regional transportation planning in the area or vicinity of the project. And so, these are the questions again for the council's benefit here. These were asked of the Planning Commission, they were also in the staff report for the city council, and have been provided at the dais, so we don't need to review them again Before moving on, though, to the applicant presentation, one slide that we don't have in this set is the next steps. So, you know, tonight's the study session with the city council. Subsequently, the plan would be to release the notes of preparation for the EIR probably mid-April. The close of that would then be mid-May with a study, or EIR scoping session, excuse me, with the Planning Commission on May 7th. That's a tentative schedule from here on out. And that concludes staff's presentation.
And just to note, we would obviously modify the schedule depending on when we would need to come back to the council.
Mark, can you repeat that? I can't hear you very well.
We would look at modifying the schedule as needed if we, considering we'd need to come back here again, too, for the study session. Thank you.
Thank you.
So then, going back to the agenda, we can take clarifying questions or move into the applicant's presentation at this time.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
Did the Planning Commission take any votes to actually summarize their feelings that evening?
No. No, they provide individual comments that we summarized.
Right. In the future, on an item, on a project this big, or when this comes back to them, it's really important to actually have them encapsulate their issues through voting. So if we could do that next time, I'd be very appreciative.
And then I have a clarifying question on timetable, just sort of the general timetable. This is, this is the early stage of a process. And I know you went on a prior slide talking about the entitlements and the different phases. We're just entering now. The next step will be the EIR scoping, and then, and then the EIR process will take how much time, and what opportunities are there for public input and comment throughout that process? I just want to, I just want to make it clear that this is, that tonight in no way is the end of the project. This is just, all the fun is just beginning, so, and that there will be plenty of opportunities. So if you could kind of outline the master schedule, that would be helpful.
Sure. So, without committing to any general dates, because we haven't identified the kind of timeline for the process yet, after the close of the EIR scoping comment period, we would then work with our consultant to identify a schedule. At some point, though, a draft EIR will be prepared, will be publicly available for comment. There will be a number of meetings before the public during that comment period on the draft EIR, along with Planning Commission study session again typically, and then ultimately, the close of that comment period, the preparation of the final EIR, and an additional meeting with the Planning Commission, ultimately, the city council. So there is a number of opportunities through that public review process once the environmental impact report and the final EIR is prepared.
Great. And that includes, for example, the development agreement, negotiation process, probably won't commence until probably after the draft EIR is released? Is that sort of a typical?
Yeah, I think it depends, but typically, we'd probably wait till the draft EIR is released or close to being released to kind of start that process with the applicant, and then ultimately, there would be check-ins with the council for that. That's part of the overall review process that we're still putting together.
Great. Thank you.
If I may also, just for the record, the applicant has conducted three community open houses to date. I know that they plan on supplementing the public hearing requirements. Will, as you have noted, will be extensive throughout this review, but there will also be opportunities for the community to have input at those events.
Great. And thank you to the, to Facebook for that, for the continuing workshops and open houses. I do think that's very helpful, so, thanks. Okay. If there are no other clarifying questions, I'd like to welcome the team from Facebook. John Tenanis, welcome. Good evening.
Well, Mark and Kyle, thank you. Really appreciate it. John Tenanis with Facebook, Vice President of Facilities. And before I introduce Shohei from OMA, our architect, I thought it would be helpful to tell you a little bit about some of the feedback that Mark mentioned that we've received from the community, but also how we're thinking about the project as well. You know, it's important to note that we've been part of the community since 2011, and at that time, we conducted our first open house. It was a one-day event. There's a picture of it up here in the middle with myself, Mark Zuckerberg, and we're getting feedback from the community city leaders that came out to the, to that one-day event. We do understand our responsibility to be a good, respectful neighbor, and we're committed to providing support that enhance and sustain Menlo Park. You know, these are some of the images of the, of what happened from 2011, and, you know, as I mentioned, we have a long history of community engagement. Since we arrived in 2011, we worked on several ideas that are pictured here. Couple of them are an undercrossing idea that someone came back with. There was a green building idea that's in the upper right-hand corner. Some folks wanted more access, a connection to the bay. That's what you see in the left-hand corner. And then a team came back with a master plan for the M2 back in 2011. You know, from that meeting, we got busy. We put together a plan. Lawrence Suizy and our team put together a plan to, and worked with environmentalists to revitalize the Bay Trail. It's about a, almost a half-mile trail that encircles the former Sun Microsystems Campus. We completed that project in about 2012. Followed by another project that we completed that we're pretty proud of was that opening up the undercrossing between below Highway 84, making the connection even safer for the public. And in two years, our team is putting together a ped-bike bridge that connects two-acre public space, connecting it to the bay. It was designed by Frank Gary Fergus, who's behind me, is managing that project. It's on schedule, on track to be completed in 2019. And then, another idea that we, we got from the community was creating this amazing building. We worked with Frank Gary and designed this highly sustainable building, providing a continuation of the landscape and habitat along the bayfront. You know, Facebook has been pretty busy. We've been hosting events and volunteering our time and having a very positive impact, you know, in the community. Here's a couple images of what we've done. The one in the middle is the Boys and Girls Club graduation ceremony. The, there's opportunities that we've had to host the farmer's market, and we've worked with the rebuilding, actually, we've worked on the solar panel programs for residential, single-family residential homes in Bellhaven. Other community support events, we've been, as I mentioned, working with Rebuilding Together. We completed the Chilco Bike and Pedestrian Lanes on Chilco, and we've been supporting other community festivals over the last several years. You know, feedback is really important to Facebook, and Mark mentioned that we've held three open houses. We've had over 300 folks attend these open houses, and we've got quite a bit of feedback, including ideas to provide a grocery store in the community, including a pharmacy, adding more green space or open space. And they've, folks in the community have also looked for relief just beyond the local community needs, but looking at regional needs as well. We've been looking at programs and projects, including the 101 Managed Lanes. We're taking the lead on that, working with CalTrains on that. We've supported and funded the Dumbarton Transportation Study recently. We started the Catalyst Fund, which was an idea that really worked out well. And we provided teacher housing at the Hamilton Housing Project that was recently completed about 200, about two years ago, and we're in the process of designing, you're going to see it tonight, about 1,500 housing units. A little bit about the site, you know, it was a, the site was originally developed as one of the first kind of technology parks. It's about 60 acres, and it was originally dedicated to, or used for the manufacturing Hiller helicopters, and they also did other work there that was related to CIA camera photography work. As you can see from this photograph, it wasn't very dense. You can see the Dumbarton Rail Corridor at the north side of the site and the Willow Road on the left side. You know, in the 60s, the site was further developed with one- and two-story multi-tenant buildings. There was a sea of parking around these buildings. About 2% of the site was dedicated for open or green space, and the type, this type of development was, was becoming obsolete or has become obsolete. For our project pictured here, the project is an opportunity to take on all these challenges that I had mentioned, building partnerships to work on these bigger issues. You know, the benefits and the impacts of the project extend just beyond our borders, though. You know, working with the city, with yourselves, with the community, with our neighbors, we want to work together in solving these problems. Now, what I'd like to do is introduce Shohei with OMA, who's going to talk about the details of the project.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Shohei Shigematsu, OMA Director. It's been a rewarding experience to work with Facebook on focusing so much on creating public domain together with a new campus. I would like to take liberty to introduce our firm a little bit. Our firm is an international partnership, having about 300 architects globally, having office in New York, Rotterdam, Doha, and Hong Kong. Maybe we're known more on a cultural project such as Seattle Public Library. The one on the left bottom is a Quebec National Museum that sits in the park, and the park actually continues through the rooftops, et cetera. We also do, though, a lot of master plan and urban design. One on the top left is a post-SANDY resiliency master plan with, working with HUD. Top right is new city center in Toronto, transit-oriented development, and top bottom right is new RFK, post-RFK Stadium Community Edge project that we're doing, the master plan in DC. We also do many mixed-use projects, as you can imagine. Top left is Boston Seaport in the new area that provides public terraces throughout the office building, and the mixed-use plaza in Santa Monica that I will explain a little bit later. We also do projects in California now. The TransBay Tower with related residential tower is actually under construction, and as I said, this is the city-owned land. It was a developers' competition. We provided a mixed use of hotel, residential, and office, and the public space at the bottom at Fourth and Arizona in Santa Monica, LA. We are also doing a park in front of LA City Hall, so we do landscapes. It's in First and Broadway, which was always abandoned, but now we're going to make this new pavilion and a new park. Now, let's dive into the project we are here to review today. As John mentioned, OMA New York was brought on to join the Willow Village project with Facebook in 2016. The project kicked off slightly prior to the finalization of Connect Menlo in December 2016, and we appreciate that Willow Village site is a key part of the GPU roadmap and arguably its most prominent mixed-use site. We wanted to understand the context, constraints, opportunities for the creation of the new mixed-use space, consistent with the GPU and its goals and principles. These are goals and principles. As John said, the existing site consists of all industrial, industrial and warehouse buildings surrounded by a sea of parking. The site is not resilient, not community-serving, not connected, and not sustainable. But the GPU allows for flexibility to locate different uses on the site. Whilst respecting the GPU's framework, the flexibility allows for a plan that better connects to the neighborhood. So, let me explain you the concept. The concept for the organization of the site is very simple. Housing mixed-use along the western and southern edge, facing outwards with connections to the surrounding community, which you see in red, and office is consolidated towards northeast with efficient configuration and relatively small footprint. So it has a community edge and a compact office. More importantly, a fundamental move of the master plan focuses on the retail street, and I wish to make it as successful, lively, and welcoming as possible to the residents and neighbors. The retail street is parallel to Willow Road but offset from it to allow enough of neighborhood intimacy and safety away from Willow traffic. Also, people will be able to walk, bike, and arrive, drive to retail street, access through two new intersections, signalized intersection on Willow. The plan is anchored by primary public open spaces on its community-facing corners, as you can see on three corners. Anchors are then linked by a series of smaller pockets of public open space and paseos along north and east, as you see the green line, line in the site. And 18 acres of open space in total, and about eight of them are all public. So this is a plan, ground-level plan. What's in blue is offices. What's in red and pink is mixed-use, and red specifically calls for the retail. So this will create a very active ground level and synergy between open space and program. So open space, of course, cannot just be open space. If you have program that activates open space, will be more successful. What we thought is to use existing public space network to create more connectivity by pulling those in to the site to create more diverse neighborhood experience, like parks, as I said, courtyards, paseos, plazas, neighborhood retail streets. So it has a diverse range of experience in this site. As you know, the site, existing 59-acre site comprised of older rundown industrial building, and the site was quite challenging. So these are just a series of layers of interventions and considerations that we put in. For example, the site has a, it's with a FEMA 100-year flood hazard zone, so we had to raise the site about three to five feet, and also adding a lot of new infrastructure. So it's the kind of, it's not just making buildings, but the whole infrastructure is thought very carefully for, for the long duration. And as John explained, intent is to work closely with neighbors through a community advisory process to develop look and feel, and make sure it feels like a new neighborhood center. So we're really keen to connect and share the look and feel, which I would like to share with you. Please look at some animation that is happening in this slide. We're very proud of this subtle technological intervention. So, this is basically retail street. Again, it's going to be a heart of the neighborhood, and the grocery store, we know it's a key component within this site, but of course, the street has to look, should look active, but also at night should look plausible, so you see the night view with a blinking light. plausible, so you see the, the night view with the blinking light. This one is the open space mood board, so you see the ball moving. And the, the important issue is that it has a network of open space, not just like scattered or just concentrated. And also has a variety of scales and active and passive recreation, so it has, again, a diversity that accommodates a place for the neighborhood. This one is very subtle, but you can see the swing, swinging. It's not a poltergeist that we are producing, but the mixed-use residential mood board, fifteen hundred units, and providing diverse units with inclusionary affordable housing units. But as you can see, it has abundance of open space also within the residential mixed-use complex that are relatively private compared to more public area that I just explained. This one is office campus. As I said, it's a compact, efficient, pedestrian-friendly, and promotes engagement with its surroundings. Energy Water Center, the sustainability aspect, this kind of utility is also an important component to make itself sustainable. And these are also design, design opportunities. So you can see, these are examples of well-designed utility centers and also a ghost walking on the street, which now disappeared. So the, and the park finally is, and the parking is consolidated, as it was mentioned, in the eastern edge, and it will act as a transit center. And also, again, it's a design opportunity, so it will not just become a typical parking. So those were the mood board, and we would like to, of course, update you as the project moves forward. The phasing is one of the most important issue that we would like to recapture again. So the, the phasing to deliver balance of residential office and open space is very important for us. And so that once it opens, you don't feel like it's completely like unfinished, but from day one, you have the critical amount of diversity of program and the space that makes this whole area looks like actual urban condition. And the grocer, grocer and the neighborhood retail street will happen in phase one, so that the heart will be provided from day one. Standing now in the beginning of the planning process, we hope we can develop this plan together to achieve what is best for the future of this community. So we are, we know that we will work with community and you on this long process. I would like to end with a series of illustrations on those open spaces that we just explained. So this is Ivy Park, an important community and open space anchor that will serve as a gateway for Bellhaven and Midpan High School students. So it's at the bottom southwest edge that faces Ivy Street. This is Retail Park, a smaller-scale neighborhood plaza and provides a meeting point at the south end of the retail street. So retail street is also linked by this kind of slightly more intimate park. And this is a retail street itself. And we believe that the great neighborhood always have this kind of great public open space and also program that activates that open space. So we, we hope that this will be the kind of the identity of this Willow Village. And as I, as I said in the beginning, I, we are doing a lot of urban design in, in the various area in the world, and this is a very unique project that, that whole master plan and design is basically focused on providing a great amenity for the community, which is quite rare as a urban master plan initiated by one company. So that, that's it for my presentation. We would like to have questions and answers. Thank you.
Thank you. There, John, has your team concluded your presentation for? Okay, great. What I'd like to suggest, unless there's any, because I think we went through a round of clarifying questions, I think we should move to public comment. And I'm waiting for my screen, screen to come up. Our first speaker this evening is Romaine Tenier, followed by Luis Guzman. Romaine, welcome. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Romaine Tenier, East Palo Alto, Cavanaugh Neighborhood resident. Dear city council members and developer, nearby East Palo Alto residents will be affected by the new planned campus. In conjunction with the project and in order to limit vehicle traffic, the Willow-O'Brien area should be redeveloped with pedestrian bicycle traffic in mind. As such, sidewalks, which at present are mostly non-existent, should be constructed all along O'Brien Drive and Cavanaugh Way in Menlo Park. Better lightning should be installed and bicycle lane should be also developed on O'Brien Drive. Passeos and streets in the Willow campus should better connect to O'Brien Drive. As such, we would like the developer to work with other nearby landowners and specifically CS Bio, which is currently redeveloping their property on Kelly Court and finalizing their design. This would allow the possibility of new connection with O'Brien and the new Willow Campus Street grid proposal. For example, utilizing the current drainage channel between ten seventy-five and eleven oh five O'Brien Drive and the previous connection between twenty Kelly Court and nine sixty thirteen fifty Hamilton. East Palo Alto and nearby Cavanaugh residents will be highly impacted by the increased vehicle traffic, especially with the campus parking on the eastern side and the O'Brien- Willow connection. Therefore, nearby East Palo Alto City Streets, Cavanaugh, Gloria University, et cetera, must be included in all current and future studies, and some of the impact fees should really go towards the city of East Palo Alto. Such fees should go towards safety and traffic mitigation, such as asphalt resurfacing and reconstruction of Cavanaugh Drive with installation of ADA-compliant crosswalk, installation of street traffic and speed calming devices on Cavanaugh Drive and Gloria Way. During the planning and approval phases, the city of Menlo Park and the Planning Commission need to also step up the current notification and feedback process and increase the outreach towards nearby East Palo Alto residents that will benefit and be affected by the project. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Great. Thank you very much. And I will mention, we do have an agreement with East Palo Alto where we will be studying many of the intersections in East Palo Alto as part of this analysis of traffic impact, not only on Menlo Park but East Palo Alto as well. Luis Guzman, welcome, followed by Mickey Winkler.
Good evening. Luis Guzman, Seven Clarence Court, East Palo Alto, a forty-year resident. Dear city council member and developer, East Palo Alto residents will also be, will also benefit from the new Willow Village Facebook campus, and we thank you for the opportunity to provide some feedback on the development proposal and initial design. We would like to have as much as local greenery and as many community park amenities as possible, since we do not have access to any public open space at present in the Cavanaugh- East Palo Alto area. Therefore, we would also like to have the O'Brien Park much bigger than the current planned size. The project is a great opportunity to incorporate the redevelopment of Hedge Hetchy right-of-way and to connect the proposed South Park Crescent between Ivy and O'Brien Parks. This will create an additional South Paseo. We would like the current developer of this project to work with the relevant parties such as the city, nearby other landlord owners, and the SFPUC to increase park playground options and hedge hedges such as secure children, toddlers areas, and tennis, basketball, football, soccer courts, et cetera, to serve future employees and local residents. To truly engage with the community, it will, it will be much better if the planned campus Willow Village was completely open, like the Google Complex complex, for example, and not have a, a part of the, of the building fenced off. Overall, we are very excited about this new mixed-use project with, with public access and amenities. Nearby residents are looking forward for the developer to implementing feedback and suggestions and enriching them success. We are also looking forward for the city of Menlo Park and the Planning Commission to encourage more such of live work-play development in the near future that, that will, that will transform the O'Brien Business Park area in a more lively community, integrated in the surrounding city neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guzman. Mickey Winkler? Good evening, Mickey, former mayor.
Good evening, folks. As most of you know, I'm not squeamish about development, but I am squeamish about traffic. And I would not approve this project until and unless Facebook can show us an integrated traffic plan for traffic relief. This might include linking the Dunbarton Bridge being overpassed to one oh one and extending the Dunbarton Rail to Redwood City and the East Bay and creating new expandable aerial form of transportation that does not compete with bikes and cars and links Facebook with Caltrain and hopefully beyond. Commutandolas, as these aerial forms of transportation are called, are being created in so many places. So I urge you to acquire a solid transportation plan before this development plan is approved. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mickey. Cecilia Pinto, followed by Simone Cannell?
Good evening. I'm a parent at Menlo Atherton High School, and I am here today because I'm concerned about, I haven't heard, the project looks terrific. I just haven't heard either in the presentation or from feedback, the feedback slide from the community meeting that just happened last week about the impact on education, specifically on Menlo Atherton High School. It's a little unusual because the high school is situated in Atherton, and yet students come from East Palo Alto, Menlo Park, unincorporated Menlo Park, Atherton. And so it's not perhaps top of mind, and yet it affects this whole community. It's an excellent high school. We're maxed out now at twenty-four hundred students. And we recently absorbed all of East Palo Alto a couple of years ago, and we've done that successfully. But this is just another wave, and it's not only this project but other development projects, and so we're very concerned. There's no more space to build, and people move here for the, you know, pay incredible prices and pay taxes for a great school district, a public school district K through twelve, and we don't want to see this jeopardized. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Cecilia. And I do want to mention, the education impacts will be part of, and the impacts on the school district will be part of the fiscal analysis that's done as part of the EIR, if I'm confirming correctly from Kyle and Mark. I did see on the slide that there will be a fiscal analysis as part of the EIR.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, it will be both in the EIR and looked at in the fiscal impact analysis, two separate documents that would be part of the overall project review.
Great. Thank you. Simone Cannell, followed by Herbert Stone?
Good evening. I'm Simone Cannell. I'm the principal at Menlo Atherton High School, the large public high school down the street that's been part of this wonderful community since nineteen fifty-one. I'm here tonight because future students of Menlo Atherton deserve to have a great public school that unfortunately will be adversely impacted with many planned developments, including Facebook's Willow Village. And to our dismay, Menlo Atherton and the Sequoia Union High School District have been excluded from all conversations in planning regarding development. Open space for building is wonderful in this area, and apparently on the peninsula, there's lots of it, but the Menlo Atherton campus doesn't have it. Why wasn't a school or education facility contemplated for Willow Village? That's what we need, and this is why. This development will further snarl traffic, create additional burdens of our, for our East Palo Alto and Bellhaven students to get to school. Facebook is building a transportation hub, that's fabulous, but how does that help students avoid dodging all the vehicular traffic to get across the freeway or the catwalk to Menlo Atherton? Increased traffic will impact all of the area schools, including our neighboring elementary schools. Come take a look at Ringwood Avenue or Middlefield at eight AM or three fifteen. It can't get worse. This development will further overcrowd Menlo Atherton, likely diminishing the quality of an excellent education, one shown by the fact that between ninety-three to ninety-six percent of our graduating seniors go to two- or four-year colleges. Currently, thirteen hundred of our twenty-four hundred students are Menlo Park residents. These are your students, city of Menlo Park, the same ones who go to Hillview, Laundretta, Willow, and Bellhaven. Our ability to continue to offer the quality programs will be further compromised. As it is now, teachers and staff can't afford to live here nor deal with traffic impacts every day. We will lose those that we haven't already. What benefit are our students and staff getting from this massive development? I'm very concerned and upset we've been forgotten about. The needs of my thirteen hundred Menlo Park students have been ignored. MA is already impacted by growth with a projected enrollment of twenty-five hundred students next year, and now we'll have to accommodate additional students on a campus that was never designed to be this large and is now fully built out. There is not another place to wedge another building, another parking lot, nor another field. The future of MA also cannot again fall on the backs of our parents to support. So MA and our community intend to be involved with the process, and Facebook and city of Menlo Park, my plea is, please work with us, don't forget about us, and remember that we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Cannell. Herbert Stone, followed by Chris Thompson?
My name is Herbert Stone. I'm a resident of Menlo Park since nineteen sixty-two. And change is always good, and up until about five, six years ago, it wasn't too bad at all. We now are overwhelmed with traffic, rude drivers. I never cross Santa Cruz Avenue in downtown without somebody else with me as protection. And I think that this idea that Facebook has, it's going to happen unfortunately unless you have the guts to tell them to form their own city and deal with their own problems on their own. Otherwise, Menlo Park will become a company town. You want to know what a company town is like? Go to Lowell, Massachusetts. They haven't recovered when the mills left in nineteen thirty-five. Go look at Detroit and go look at Ford Utopia in Brazil or Pittsburgh. We don't want to be a company town, and if we're going to be overwhelmed unless you are very strong and demanding a great deal out of Facebook. But really, you should ask them to start their own city and call themselves Ford Facebook Utopia and live happily ever after. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stone. Chris Thompson, followed by Adina Levin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Otaki.
Mr. Christie, welcome.
Hello, hello. Mayor Protam Mueller and Councilmember Klein. I'm Chris Thompson, as you may know, a twenty-two-year member of this community, proudly so, a two-term member of the Sequoia Union High School District and currently serving as the board president for the district. As you've heard, the Menlo Atherton High School and the Sequoia Union District have a critical interest in the Facebook project. One indication of that interest was handed to me as I came in the door, a hundred and sixty-six petitions from community members, I think, school parents, written, though it's a letter written to Facebook, I'm to hand this to you as I go off as a petition from our community. I'd like to take Mr. Tanane at his word. I'd like to take Mr. Tanane at his word when he said this evening—and I quote, I hope I quote correctly, "Facebook is committed to providing support that enhances and sustains Menlo Park." Of course, a critical component of the Menlo Park community are our public schools. As we at Sequoia look at this project, there are both strengths—real strengths—and areas of concern. On the plus side, it is widely understood that we have a compelling need to expand the inventory of affordable housing. This is essential to our efforts to recruit and retain great teachers, as well as extraordinary city employees for our community. For this work, I want to say thanks to the city council, to the city staff, and to Facebook. On the cautionary side, many of us are concerned about the negative consequences the Facebook project could have if it adds more students to our district without providing adequate funding to support these same students. In the reports and numbers that you will receive from our superintendent and district staff, we will be sharing with you the potential negative financial impact the project could have for the district, and I'm quite grateful to hear from Mayor Otaki today that the financial analysis will be part of the process. Additionally, I want to express concern about the potential overcrowding of our schools that could result from the Facebook project unless total development fees are sufficient to expand our school facilities. You heard a little bit of that from our principal at MA. There's good evidence that our community does not want to see overcrowding of our schools. Four years ago, we passed a $265 million facilities bond measure. 72% of Menlo Park voters supported Measure A, a bond whose major focus was to minimize overcrowding in our school. Let's be sure that the Facebook project offsets the incremental capital costs to keep our schools appropriately sized for educational excellence. I want to close with this note. It was—if you'll let me do one paragraph.
Yes, please.
It was four years ago that 15,000-plus voters elected me to serve as a trustee of the Sequoia District. At that time, I pledged to work for the constant improvement of our public schools. This fall, I'll be back on the campaign trail, and frankly, more focused on Menlo Park because we've gone to district elections, as you are too. The leading question I expect to be asked is, what am I doing to sustain and increase the quality of education for our children? I urge the city council to join me in assuring our community that the decisions on the Facebook development have a clearly positive impact on our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Adina Levin, followed by Britt Von Taden.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Adina Levin. I'm on the Complete Streets Commission, and I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee that gave advice to the city council as the general plan was created that set the stage for this type of live-work-play-mixed-use development. And as someone who is really strongly supportive of that vision, I'm really thrilled to see that moving forward to fruition with this Willow Village proposed development. I have several comments and one pretty good-sized question. So in the comments having to do with transportation, one of the things that you'll be getting tonight is an update on the transportation master plan and comments on Willow and Bayfront for Willow, given the fact that there will be so many more people living and working and enjoying on these streets and walking and bicycling, want to see consideration of those streets as a pedestrian area with, you know, many more people walking. The East Palo Alto comments about improved connectivity and public space supporting our neighbors, those sounded like good comments to take advantage of. Thankful for Facebook for investing in the studies of the Dunbarnton Corridor and look forward to accelerated progress of solutions that will relieve congestion by improving person throughput, taking cars off the streets. My big question—and this is something that I've been, you know, looking at the staff reports and our general plan documentation, and I'm kind of struggling and haven't been able to figure it out, and if council might be interested in having that be clarified, that would be welcome. So in the general plan, the concept of, you know, having the balance of housing and jobs so we don't make things worse was a topic of conversation. And my understanding with this proposal—which may be incorrect, and I would welcome it to be clarified—is that the direction that this is going might have relatively—from the general plan, you know, more jobs and a higher jobs-to-housing ratio than before. I am not 100% sure that's correct, and will welcome that to be clarified from staff. And if it is correct, I would like to see us as a city really work to address that because that gap is part of what's driving our crisis in housing affordability, as well as in traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Britt Von Taden or Thodden? No, I'm sorry. Thodden. Britt, good evening.
Good evening, Britt Von Thodden.
You'll be followed by Superintendent Mary Strashly.
Good evening. Britt Von Thodden of Menlo Park. I just wanted to come here tonight to inform you, which you may or may not know, that all the parcels involved on this redevelopment project are currently subject to deed restriction from soil and groundwater contamination. It resulted from industrial processes early in the current development, and my issue right now is that one—the southernmost part of the residential development is situated right on what was the former source area of the historic contamination. In the '90s, the area was investigated and remediated. It received a regional board sign-off for no further action in the late '90s. However, that was under its current use of commercial industrial, which does not take into consideration residential use. So anything involving future development with the residential needs to address and look at the existing conditions of soil and groundwater, both from a construction standpoint and vapor intrusion standpoint for future residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Strashly, Superintendent. Welcome, Sequoia Union High School District. Followed by—
Good evening.
—Matthew Zito after.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. As Superintendent of Sequoia Union High School District, I am here because the community we serve does not feel as if the schools are being taken into consideration in this process. Every day, I have parents express to me their concerns about the future of our district, and their concern that one of the better schools in the district in California—and in California—will become overcrowded. I took this job about a year ago today, and from day one, when I stepped foot in the district and started touring the schools and meeting parents, before we became aware of this project, the parents, teachers, staff, students, all talked to me instantly about the crowding of the schools, especially in the Menlo Park area. They're asking me now for a plan as to how we are going to absorb the new students generated by the 1,500 new homes, and I guess the 5,000, 500 homes in the entire plan. So this needs to be a section, I guess, of the strategy to accommodate the growth. Sadly, I don't have an answer for that because the district hasn't been properly brought to the table to discuss the development in a working partnership. I want to be clear, and I think I have in our communication, that this is not about the actual strive to create affordable housing, but any great city planning accommodates public schools into a large urban development. What I am here to say that I'm against is the process is feeling more and more one-sided in that it does not feel as if there's a true interest in understanding how this development impacts the schools. I hear counterarguments about ways that developer fees are somehow supposed to accommodate all of this, or that property taxes—even those—I understand these might be rental units. There's just really not a lot of information in the community to understand the complexity of how basic aid districts are funded, and we do not receive state money for additional students. And so it really is on the backs of our community. So Mayor Otaki and members of the council, we're here because we're looking to you to provide the leadership in this process, because to find a solution, this council needs to take a lead to establish where we begin in our negotiation. Mountain View has been very successful with their tech giant to the south, Google, and they have successfully given the language in the process to bring Google to the table with Mountain View Wisman and Mountain View Los Altos, and they are starting a productive discussion on how they're going to accommodate the schools. So we're following it closely, and it's a great model that I think we should use. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Matthew Zito, followed by Karen Porter. Good evening, Mr. Zito.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. So I have quite a bit to say. I don't think I'll be able to fit it in tonight, so look forward to be able to come back in future meetings to share the rest of my thoughts. So I'm Matthew Zito, the chief facility officer for the Sequoia Union High School District, and I'm the construction guy. So the district is greatly concerned about the Willow Village development and by what I think could be charitably called "very poor outreach." The cost of accommodating the students generated by 1,500 proposed housing units is substantial. I'm personally very happy to see a commitment to building below-market-rate housing and to larger townhome and apartment units. However, let's be very clear: Those units will generate students. Below-market-rate units generate the greatest number of students of all. Property taxes do not pay for new construction, modernization, or land purchase and new school development. Again, the property tax money we get does not pay for any of that. The district was very fortunate to be able to buy two acres of property in the M2 for $9.1 million. That land, because of all this development, is now worth $17 million. There is no land for schools. Mountain View will be given quite a bit of money for Google, and it's going to be hard-pressed to find a school site. Ken Rinella from Menlo Park could never find a school site. So we have this very challenging set of situations that the district is then forced to address. And again, the district's going to be looking towards the council for you to have us and Facebook sit down to hammer out an agreement on this, just like they've done in Napa, just like they've done in Patterson, just like they've done in Mountain View, that the district or the developer, when they come here, is instructed to go work with the school district. That's the way this is supposed to happen. This development will blow the lid off enrollment at MA. As a district, we do quite a bit of work to try to transfer everyone out of that attendance area. We run buses to Caromont. We run buses to Woodside. We have a small charter school in East Palo Alto. We don't allow anyone in. That's to keep the school at 2,600. Speaking of that, we just spent $50 million of taxpayer money from Measure A to expand the campus for those 500 students. I have wedged a building on every part of that property. There is no more room to develop it unless we surgically remove the center of campus and create eminent domain and create a trailer park somewhere near the school for 40 classrooms. I can't imagine what that would cost, but it should be around $100 million. It'd be terribly disruptive. We also have a situation where there are lots of other projects in consideration that are going to affect this one. So you can't just look at this one massive project. We need to look at some of the other projects being brought by Sabrato. And again, finally, and I realize my time is up, I realize there's a fiscal analysis piece that's going to be completed. I hope it's a lot more rigorous than the one that was completed for the Connect Menlo EIR, which basically explained away any costs that the school district might have related to those 5,000 housing units. So if you want to do a fiscal analysis, just make sure it's a robust one. The district, I think, will bring their own fiscal analysis to the table. So we intend to be involved in the EIR every single step of the way, and in this project every step of the way, to ensure that we don't shortchange kids or make it impossible for students to East Palo Alto to even get to MA or our school in the M2, which seems to have been forgotten. So we will be back. Appreciate the time and the ability to speak for just a few minutes—or a few moments longer than three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Zito. Karen Porter, followed by Everardo Luna.
Good evening. I don't live in Menlo Park, but in a very close neighboring city, so I appreciate your I have many concerns about this project, several of which have been very ably addressed, particularly from my standpoint, the traffic impacts. But I think I'm hearing the school impacts are also very serious. So I will address a slightly different angle. With the news that's been coming out more and more, it's becoming more and more apparent that Facebook is simply not acting like a good corporate citizen. I'm referring in particular to Facebook's complicity, if not collusion, with various bad actors in the 2016 election, possibly stealing the presidential election, probably down-ticket races as well, not to mention elections around the world. This includes previously undisclosed data mining from 50 million Facebook users by Cambridge Analytics, as well as Facebook's hosting of Russian content that was part of a widespread disinformation campaign aimed at voters. Facebook is currently under investigation by various government agencies for its conduct. In light of these developments, I believe now is not the time for business as usual. I hope the council will take into consideration that no project of this nature and scope should be allowed to proceed as long as there are serious questions about Facebook's ethics and business practices. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Everardo Luna, followed by Jen Wolison. Good evening.
Good evening, Everardo Luna. Nine-year resident of Menlo Park, previously 20-year resident of East Palo Alto, and here to speak about a little bit on the Cavanaugh neighborhood area that's going to be—I feel severely affected, given the reason that in the proposed plan, there's a street—a new street that opens up onto O'Brien, and that will have access for any overflow traffic that is not able to get out through either University or Willow Road to start going through the Cavanaugh neighborhood. I live in the Willows neighborhood, and some of you council members do as well. We can remember what it looked like the couple months where traffic was backed up all the way up to Menalto, Chester, Durham, O'Keefe, Gilbert. All of that was just—it was horrendous. We literally sat at the Mandrinis—I probably pronounced it wrong—supermarket, and the bus—the Samtrans bus sat at the stoplight on Gilbert and was barely crossing the little mom-and-pop shop there, and we had already finished eating. And that's how bad it was. So I'm hoping that maybe the council can consider moving forward until there's some traffic mitigation report done on this, and also that street only be accessible to either pedestrians and bicyclists. We see that in college towns where there's the barriers that are triggered by a remote control, that only it lets the commuter buses through, but it's bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly. And this way, we would really keep those 5,000 cars going through the Cavanaugh neighborhood because not everybody's going over the bridge. People are going back into Menlo Park. And as far as the principal for Menlo Atherton School spoke, my daughter also goes to Menlo Atherton, and I have a pretty good sense of what happens in the community regarding traffic. I've been a UPS driver for 23 years. I've seen the change in the community, and I can tell you, some of our drivers that live in East Palo Alto take their siblings or their brothers or sisters to school. It literally takes them an hour to go to Menlo Atherton and come back just because of the traffic. So, you know, this really needs to be carefully sought and planned out well because it's not just going to affect, you know, the main corridors, which is Willow Road and University. It's going to affect the quality of life for all the residents in the neighboring town and in the neighboring community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jen Wolison. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, council. I first want to thank you for holding this study session, and I—
and I do appreciate Facebook's outreach efforts. A lot of people have addressed the jobs, housing imbalance, transportation infrastructure impact to schools, there's the whole fire district issues. Really, it's up to you as the council to really have leadership on this. And Connect Menlo was developed to deal with growth until the year 2040, and this project is taking up over, I think, 80% or 90% almost of the office land. And were we really considering the pace of that growth? And are we really prepared with our infrastructure to handle it? And a lot of the other questions that are brought up. There's something else to consider. I believe as Mr. Vito mentioned about the cumulative impact of all the Facebook development is really something that we, I would like you to look at. I know with Stanford, some of you mentioned the concept of some of their employees or people parking in one area of Stanford and then shuttling in and having that count with trip caps. And so I would really encourage you with trip caps and transportation to look at the cumulative impact. Someone also mentioned the idea of a company town. And when you're looking at this project and what's being proposed, please consider life potentially after Facebook. And what would happen if something happened to Facebook? Our company and this town are going to be so interlinked, it already is. And Menlo Park's future is going to really depend on the decisions you make and making sure that this development can outlive Facebook if needed. I still think that, I know Complete Streets will ultimately hear about the circulation going on with this, but again, Facebook is proposing to change the circulation that was proposed in Connect Menlo. And I think earlier than later, to have it go to Complete Streets, I know staff is looking at this, I know Facebook has their transportation experts, but you've got to get community members who are invested in making sure that the flow within the project area, between the project area and the Bellhaven neighborhood, and within the whole M2 area in Bellhaven, and with the larger Menlo Park community to truly connect Menlo. It's got to go to Complete Streets sooner than later. Thank you for your leadership in this area.
Thank you, Jen. I just want to check if there are any more cards. All right. Thank you, everyone, for speaking this evening. Before we come back up here for questions, I'll ask our city staff and also invite the applicant to respond. I'll just, I'll just sort of take some general categories of the questions from public comment and ask you to give us some initial thoughts on it. You know, certainly, we heard from many speakers this evening about, about the impact on the Sequoia Union High School District, Menlo Atherton High School, from the additional housing units. I would perhaps broaden that question to not only the Sequoia Union High School District, but the, the impact on the Ravenswood School District. I know it was studied in Connect Menlo, so I know, recall it was part of that, that process. But outline for me, as we go forward, that certainly, as we go forward in the EIR process and review, that certainly the impact on education will be one of the areas that, that there'll be an opportunity to study. Because obviously, I don't have a solution right off the top, top of my head, and, but it's not a new issue. And it's something that, as we're going into the EIR process, I'm assuming that there's some way to be able to have that studied or be a part. And, and I'm, not just the fiscal impact analysis, but perhaps, you know, just making sure that there is the input, the outreach and the input from our various school district partners, both the Sequoia Union High School District and Ravenswood School District, to see if during the course of the EIR process, we can come up with something that, that might address the impacts. So with that long-winded question, if you have any thoughts on that, welcome.
So to start with what I think was the first component, the Ravenswood City School District, that is included in, in our EIR, has been and would be, as well as the FIA. We do reach out to all public services. So we do reach out to the fire district, the police department. We reach out to the school districts to get their input on some data needs, questions throughout the process as well, to inform our analysis.
Okay, thank you. I certainly, I think we've, we've heard this evening certainly a request to make, to make sure that we do include them in, and I know we'll have a series of meetings related to the EIR and want to make sure they're included in the process. And I did mention the Ravenswood School District as well, just because they're experiencing declining enrollment. Now, this may actually offset some of that. But then, again, what I, what I did notice is, so, you know, I went back, looked at, at the fiscal impact analysis that was done as part of Connect Menlo. And one of the concerns I had is it didn't do an analysis related to the capital requirements, the, the school requirements, which, so what I'm suggesting is I want to make sure when we go through the analysis that we take that into account, the capital, and potentially facility needs that, and making sure that we are at least certainly analyzing that aspect. The, certainly another large area of questions relate around traffic congestion. And, and while I certainly know that as part of the EIR, we will be doing some extensive traffic study that include not only impacts on Menlo Park intersections, but will also include impacts on East Palo Alto intersections. I do want to, and proposed mitigations that, that will come out of that analysis in the draft EIR. But I did want to follow up with the, with this question about cumulative impact. I do think this is something that, in fact, I had in my notes as a question that I wanted to ask. Certainly, as we go through the EIR, it'll be focused very much on this project, the Willow Village. But I know that there are concerns raised by our community about the cumulative impact of not just this project, but also the cumulative impact of, you know, of the east campus, the, the various campus expansions that we have recently or previously approved. Some of them have trip caps. This may or may not have, you know. So trying to get a cumulative analysis or view, I think would be very helpful. And I do think it would be helpful because Facebook is a single organization, so you can look at it as, as it will be sort of a system and a circulation system unto itself. So to the extent that we can, as part of that process, look at the cumulative traffic, particularly given the facilities as they're spreading out, impact different intersections. So I don't know how to do that, but, but I think you've heard the concern about wanting to look at the cumulative aspect. And then, and then finally, there were comments expressed from the particularly residents of the Cavanaugh neighborhood there about, about whether it's bike pedestrian access, some open space. I think as we get into our discussion about open space, maybe we can weave that into that. So I don't necessarily need you to address that now, but I know that's one of the questions you have of us. And perhaps we can weave that into that, that discussion. That sounds okay. And, and I also wanted to invite the applicant, if you had any comments or reactions to some of those public comment questions, you're, you're welcome to, to add to it or, or echo what, what we've asked staff, so.
Well, we heard all the feedback, which is great. And I think we need time to absorb that and, and think about a response. Yeah.
Thank you, John. All right. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah. So I have a bunch of questions and feedback for staff. I'm not going to get through all these key topics tonight. And frankly, I don't think we should without Councilmember Keith here for discussion on council. But I do want to get through a number of things. And one of the things I think I really want to point out, and it's probably going to be slightly annoying for some, but in November of 2016, when the general plan came up, I co-wrote an editorial with then-chair of Planning Commission Catherine Strel and one of our longest-serving planning commissioners, Henry Riggs. And we wrote, however, despite all the positive apertutes, the general plan is incomplete and should not be approved at this time absent more work. Why? The general plan presently does not contain an adequate framework for the creation of infrastructure necessary to support the plan. I felt that way then. I feel that way now. And I think that's what we're hearing tonight when we're talking to the Sequoia Union High School District. And I think we're, when we're talking about the Transportation Master Plan and the things that need to be done with respect to transportation, we still haven't figured out how we're going to pay for it. And so we have this very, this very exciting concept of what Facebook would like to do, but we're all staring at it, just saying, how do we make this work? Because we can't figure out how to pay for the infrastructure improvement to make it work. And it seems like pushing that all onto Facebook, and I think they would probably say is unfair because it's a regional issue, with there's many other stakeholders in the M2 that also contribute to that. And it's unfair to push that off onto current parents in the Sequoia Union High School District, who already have had a bunch of bond improvements. And so I think we have to go back now and do that work that was put off then and figure out how, what is the revenue, and what is the revenue assessment that we do here that we get in to pay for this? And so, and I frankly don't know how to do that. So my first question to you all is, I take very seriously what we're hearing about this Sequoia Union High School District. I know MA is overcrowded. I know the land acquisition costs. I mean, I already know they're already putting in one very small high school, frankly, to the consternation of some in the city, in the M2 area because of where it's placed. And it's also very small-sized. Can't take that many more people there. And frankly, we're going to have to try to figure out how to get the kids even there with all the development around it. How will we pay for land acquisition costs for a new high school in proximity to where these students are going to be coming from? And I, and I take very seriously the comment that those kids are going to be stuck on the bus all day. We have kids who are stuck on the bus a very long time trying to get back and forth from East Palo Alto. So that, so I want to make clear, I don't just want the EIR to look at these issues. I want the EIR to address cap, land acquisition costs and capital infrastructure improvement costs. The, the next thing to talk about, very frankly, is tonight, we had a very interesting issue in that there is only three of us here. One of us is recused, the other one of us is traveling. But it may be that in, when this does come up for a vote, that we will be in a district, we will have had district elections. And one of our council members may be recused, specifically the council member from District 1. Because it's hard to imagine, it's conceivable they could live within 500 yards of Facebook or have something, have an economic interest or subject matter issue. Well, that should bring us down to four. Let's mention for a second that we're looking at our city council, like our, that looks like our planning commission, and somehow we end up, like we do now, with one other council member accused for some other reason. Now we're down to three. Should three council members have a vote on this project of whether or not it goes forward? Or is this something where we should be considering? And I raise this issue now because at the time, if I raise this issue after November 2018, what will happen is people will say, Ray, you're raising this issue because of what just happened in that election. Either way, they're going to say it's political. So I'm going to raise it now before that election happens and say, should we be considering that this, much like the Bohannon Project, which was a much smaller project in comparison, should this be something that be voted on by the city? I don't know the answer to that question, but I think we have to have a discussion about that. I think the applicant should think about that. I think the city needs to talk about that. Because I'll tell you, if there's just three of us there that night, I'm going to feel really, I, I know I'm not going to, I'll be here, and I'm not going to be recused. And I'm going to be feeling really uncomfortable making the decision with two other people about a project this size. The thing that, the people who are not here tonight, and we know we're going to hear from them, is the fire district. And so I know they're going to have comment on their fire district response times. I know they're going to have comments about Willow Road. So at the next planning commission meet, at the next public hearing on this, I want to make sure that they're invited to the next study session to give us comment. Because I don't want to be in a situation where we get further down the road and they say they weren't invited. I think the, the issue about the Complete Streets Commission is accurate. And I wanted to ask our transportation professionals who are here from city staff, is, is the complete street, the project, the Transportation Master Plan project looking at the configuration as proposed in this project now? Or is it the prior configuration that was in Connect Menlo?
Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. So I think the EIR that's completed for this project, the, the Facebook Willow Village, will need to address the changes that are proposed to the circulation system. The Transportation Master Plan, in the context of the overall city, we, we haven't gotten to the level of detail of looking at the, the connections on the campus, because that's going to be looked at as part of the, the project. So if the project were not to move forward, then the, the circulation questions are kind of a non-issue for us at that point. So we're looking at it as being more appropriate to look at through the project review of the project itself as opposed to the, the master plan. And the, the Complete Streets Commission would see the environmental impact report for the Facebook campus project as part of the, the review process. So large projects that have EIRs have gone through the commission, and that's been part of their, their charge in the last few years.
Will the Transportation Master Plan Committee take a look at this project in as, in formulating the, in formulating what their recommendation is in formulating the plan?
So not this project specifically, but in the context of the, the overall development levels that were proposed in Connect Menlo, they would. But we were not scoped as part of the Transportation Master Plan to take this project through the Oversight and Outreach Committee for the Transportation Master Plan.
All right.
So council can direct otherwise. I will leave that open.
I'm going to, I have a feeling my colleague who's not here is going to have some opinions on that. So we'll probably come back to that at our next council meeting. I'll reserve that for her out of kindness. The question, so this was an interesting issue that I hadn't heard before that was raised, and that there's a deed restriction with respect to residential development because of soil and water contamination on this site. Do we know about that? And is that, if, how is that going to affect the phasing?
So I can start and let the applicant jump in if need be. So this, this has been the case on other sites. The west campus had a land use covenant deed restriction. Those are things that will be looked at as part of the EIR analysis. And if certain remediation levels need to be improved, those would be mitigations through the EIR. So in terms of like, the detailed question about that, I don't have knowledge of that at this time. But that would be something that we would be getting information from throughout the process, looking at in the EIR, identifying mitigations. It, it is something that we've seen through the land use covenant for Building 20 that was removed after further remediation.
Do you guys have comment on that tonight?
Sure. Fergus O'Shea. So the, as colleagues pointed out, you know, we've worked with the EPA DTSE on previous sites. We've already engaged DTSE on this site specific. We'll work with them to develop a mitigation plan for any contaminant issues that we'll find on site. We're aware of it. And we've, we've, we've our environmental consultant who's well aware of the history of the site, and it's something we're working on already.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll get more information about that later on. I think that, so I think it's fair, so I understand former Mayor Winkler's comments, and I am interested in how the Transportation Master Plan, so here's the deal. At the end of the day, the community needs to buy into what we're doing here. And so I think a Transportation Master Plan needs to show that it's integrated this project into it. It's just going to need to show that. And so...
And so, we're, you know, whether or not that means the Transportation Master Plan Committee looks at this or not, my, my thing would be, yeah, they probably need to take a look at it and give an advisory opinion on whether or not it's fitting into that. I think Ms. Wilson's comments were, were correct in that respect, as were, and I think Ms. Winkler's political judgment there is also wise. I took, the comments with respect whether or not there should be sidewalks or bike lanes on O'Brien, I absolutely think that there should be with this product. The amount, given the location of those, the location of where those garages are, I just, I think it's just something that's going to be necessary in the project. So, and we're going to need to work very closely with our friends in East Palo Alto on this project. Those are all the comments I have tonight. Oh, actually, that's not true. The jobs housing imbalance question that Adina raised was actually one that I had, that I wasn't sure I was going to raise tonight or talk about the next study session. But this is really directed towards staff, and I don't need a report out tonight. But when it comes back in the next study session, what I need to understand is the context of this project, and then also, because there is quite a few other housing and office projects in the M2 right now that have been, that are in the pipeline, where do we come out in the jobs housing balance on that? So, it's, I want to make sure if, when projects like this come forward, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about, there's a lot of housing being built, and we're addressing the jobs housing balance. And what I want to be able to do is look a resident in Menlo Park in the eyes and say, this project plus this project plus this project improves the situation or not? I want to make sure that I'm not giving spin, but I'm giving accurate information to a resident when I talk about that.
Just Vice Mayor Mueller, just so we make sure that we're on the same page. So you want a report out of, is there a timeframe of recently completed projects in the M2 and proposed ones in the pipeline?
Yeah.
And are these applications that are filed or everything that we're aware of?
What we're aware of? How does it all shake out with this project where we are on that? That's almost like a health check anyway on the general plan, if it's coming in as we thought it would come into. Is that possible for you to do? Or it looks like there's some consternation?
There, I need a better poker face. Um, no, there's...
No, I appreciate it.
No, we can, we can certainly provide an overview. Obviously, it's contingent on when this next session is, but we'll do our best.
All right. Those are my, all my questions for tonight.
All right. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. My voice, I lose my voice earlier today, so I tried to speak up louder, but I do want to obviously thank you, Facebook, for your presentation and the work, but also thank you to a lot of the, kind of, let's just say, our, kind of our institutional leaders, you know, from school districts, agencies, most things, for coming in and, and giving us more to think about and, and kind of reminding us of the responsibility and where these things are. I'm going to go through some of the questions, and then I, I think some are repetitive, and I try not to do, to, to repeat, but maybe I'll ask one extra question to push some of those things along. And the first one's a cumulative impact question that's come up. Have you, have you seen a, a method where cities or, you know, agencies, could be any type of organization, they've been able to, to have an ongoing run where, where you could have something on the website that shows you numbers based on projected projects, approved projects, here's the impacts, and have some kind of easy way for everybody to access and say, here's jobs to housing ratio, here's traffic, right, transportation trips? Because I think oftentimes, we get into these really heavy discussions, and it, and it doesn't translate out as well when we report out, when it comes out in, you know, articles or anything to the general city. And, and creating some accessibility for people to see where we're at in some of these would be helpful, but I'm asking if you've seen that, if you're aware of it, or if you've thought about it.
I don't know if I've seen specifically what you're referencing to. I will briefly say, the city is in the process of developing a much more user-friendly website as it relates to recently approved and proposed developments, so that the public can easier, easier access the plans, the elevations, the statistics related to either employment or number of units and, and all of that. So, we are hopeful that that will be launched within the next quarter.
Okay.
So I think some of that, that could be a Phase Two, if you will, of that website. I would encourage you actually to look at Redwood City's website. They have a model that we are following, where again, it is very easy to grab information from tables as it relates to proposed development. So this is something that, related to your cumulative question, you know, could be then, we could look at, you know, these particular developments in this particular area have this type of, like, this number of total employment, this number of units.
Right.
Versus just by development site.
Right. Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. And then, and then is there, I do, the, the hard part about the, the discussion is we've had like multiple, you know, approval processes. So there's been stages of this development project, and, and we've had various discussions. And I think early on, there was a big emphasis on, on figuring out how to create these, it wasn't really joint powers, but it was, you know, schools, and it was neighboring cities, and it was state, local agencies. It was trying to create this more, more of a consortium of the stakeholders early on, so there's, there's more interaction engagement between this rather than a, your time hasn't come yet, you know, and now it's your time, and there's 30 days left in the cycle or whatever. I just feel like that process worked to a point, but it doesn't feel like that process is working now. And I think we're going to put a lot of burden on the, on our, our school leadership and others to respond quickly, go through the data quickly, right, to come back with something. And, and I feel like that's, that's where we get upside down as a community, pretty quickly. Curious if there is a way we can patch that up quickly, where we can get people together to do that now, so that we can bring in some of those, those key stakeholders and get a real engagement going, so that we don't have these mystery numbers coming out late, or meetings that may have happened that people weren't aware of because they had their own meetings? Because that's what you do when you, when you lead these groups, so. Could we do something relatively quickly just to get the voices at the table, have conversations? That would help first, I think.
So we, as I referenced before, we have bi-weekly meetings with, with the applicant. We have one coming up on Thursday. Obviously, they need to be a part of...
Yes, of course.
...that conversation.
They're the host, so, in a lot of ways, because it's their project, and is, 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 can it be opened to involve some of the other leaders, the local agency leaders and partners?
We'll discuss it on, on Thursday and get both sides' ideas on how we can do a better job with that.
Okay. And then, there are some good conversations, and, and some of the points that I think that, that I think are important for us to address, and one of them is going to be, you know, when you look at the 2040 timeline, this has been a challenge with the downtown specific plan. It's a challenge with all of these bigger plans, is you have this really long horizon line. You have one or two projects that, that are much more progressive, and they move, right? And they're going to move against that number. So the number's going to look like, well, what's left, right? Did we realize this? And, and I know specific plan, we had the conversation about how much housing we have left, how much office space left. Did we realize this? And we incentivized for people to go fast because we wanted there to be some redevelopment. In this case, are you comfortable looking at that from the 80 to 90% of the office volume taken up when this project's completed in the 2040 plan? I mean, is, is that fairly typical standard in some of these? This is not a typical situation, so let's just say, have you seen instances where this is kind of how these, these plans unroll?
I will, as you know, I've worked in a number of other municipalities. No, I have not.
Okay.
Seen it happen that quickly, to be quite honest with you. We do, are scheduled to, similar to the specific plan, have a bi-annual review of the general plan at the end of this year. That's obviously going to have to be part of that conversation as to where we, where we could stand if this project and other projects are approved, and if there needs to be a revisiting of what those, those maximums are or, or not. That, that, that there needs to be a period of time for the community to, to judge the impact of, of what has been approved and then revisit it at a later date.
And then, the, with that association, and you're, you know, you know this, but it's the, the, let's just say, the state agencies, like the Dunbarton Rail, right, which it always sounds, you know, this, this fantastical idea of connectivity in the trains, but when you actually get close enough and talk to some of the leadership in the state agency side, it really, it's a buzzkill. There's just, doesn't feel like they're on pace to meet this type of growth. And it's always a discussion about several hundred millions of dollars here or there. Looks like you, some city in, across the bridge is going to take it and build bigger freeways. And, and so you have these discussions. We already lost money, you know, to BART that went in Warm Springs several years ago that was dedicated to Dunbarton Crossing. How do we, how do we get optimistic about having infrastructure that can actually come online in time to support the growth? And that's both sides, I think. And I know there's some folks on the Facebook side that have had very regular conversations and have spent probably far too much time thinking about different ways to move people and to do it in an elegant way, but I'm looking at the macro from a Dunbarton rail crossing, which I'm not hearing the best news when I talk to frankly, to some of the state leaders around it, because it's always this funding mechanism that, that's under debate. I don't, but then they, there's always this, this little whisper that's, well, maybe Facebook. We've talked to Facebook. Facebook did that study, so maybe Facebook. And then you see it in all the letters here. I think it's, it's a good way out if you're stuck having a conversation with the local council members to say, well, you know, Facebook might be able to help with that. But I don't want to say that unless there are conversations that we know about that are having, happening, that, that are fairly, you know, let's just say, mature. Are, is there any updates that people could be aware of? If not, you know, Louis, I know these are touch and go meetings, so I, however you want to put it, sometimes it's a meeting where you're like, hey, this is great, or maybe it's, it's more of a dream.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Louis Knight, Advanced Development Director at Facebook. As you know, we paid for the Dunbarton Corridor Transportation Study. We remain in conversations with SAM Trans about how to move the corridor as a greater mobility solution for pedestrians, bicycles, buses, and trains in a all-encompassing program. Those conversations are ongoing. We are hopeful, as is the CEO for SAM Trans, Jim Hartnett. You know, our goal is that we need to accelerate the Dunbarton Corridor mobility from Redwood City to the East Bay. We'd like to see that happen faster, and it requires, quite frankly, it requires projects of this magnitude to become the catalysts of addressing regional transportation need. You know, we look at Willow Road, and Willow Road unfortunately is a state highway, and the burdens on Willow Road are the burdens that Bell Haven has to deal with, that we have to deal with, and by and large part, East Palo Alto has to deal with as well. Their traffic going from somewhere else in the region to somewhere else in the region. And that is really, quite frankly, beyond, you know, the traditional controls of the city of Menlo Park. And so, you know, what we need collectively is thinking very critically differently about how we implement some of these major infrastructure projects, and we build regional alliances around it. We remain in conversation.
How can we, how can we as a community get more comfortable on some of those projects? And I don't, you know, I don't want to single out Dunbarton all the time, but there's also, you know, cross, right, just getting kids to schools, right, that are like that...
Safe routes to schools and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, the, the Complete Streets is, you know, a stepping stone.
Yep.
The city's transportation plan is another stepping stone. However, coordination across multiple agencies in multiple cities is a really big deal. Aiden Hughes from ARUP, when he was working on a regional transportation study for one of the BART commissioners, suggested that none of the cities and none of the counties actually coordinated their transportation plans. It's a really big deal, right? You can have, you know, we believe in bicycle connections, and yet there are a number of gaps and safety gaps in the network. You know, the, the road network, you know, Dunbarton was never really connected to 101, and that causes the problems that both we and East Palo Alto and the Marsh Road residents have to put up with because it's regional traffic. So I think there's a broader alliance that we need to, we need to build to be able to address these big problems.
Do you think even short-term, there could be alternative routing where we have, let's just say, off-streets for just buses for kids and no, you know, keep other traffic from doing it so that you don't have buses just sitting in the same traffic for an hour?
Yeah, I, I think so, right. I think, you know, the MTC is currently looking at, and I think staff is involved in this, the Dunbarton Forward, which is increasing passenger throughput. I would, you know, counsel that at a local level, jobs to housing balance is really something which is applied regionally. You know, we've got regional shuttles which are running to seven of the nine home counties because our people choose to live in the great neighborhoods throughout the region. But in terms of business perspectives, whether it's Facebook or some of our competitors or different industries, they really, for their, their business sense, need to cluster. You know, there's 25% of the, of the region's logistics warehouse space in Castro Valley, Hayward, Union City Complex. That's there for a reason, right? It's because that's, they need to cluster for their success. So as we look forward, you know, as we look forward into this, you know, we really need to think through, you know, what the impacts are regionally, rather than just from a local perspective.
Okay. Thank you, Louis. And then, the last couple of questions were, are just going to be, they actually echo a little bit, but they also kind of, kind of reiterate. We, our, our biggest challenge is oftentimes that, when it comes to the school districts, is that we have so many. This size community, we have five districts that are somehow crossed at impact, you know, have, we have impacts with. And I know it's, it's, makes it harder than it usually is to have, you know, a clear conversation. But I, but I don't think there's any mystery on, on, on the numbers. The jobs housing numbers have an impact on our ability when we look at the projections of schools and the number of people that are going to come into those schools. And we, we, we knew this coming in. We knew this coming into any of the big plans we had, and this one in particular, we, we had two things, I think, on housing that we were worried about. One of them is inducement of, of more students than we can handle, and then, you know, the market shift of the housing itself, so that no matter how much affordable housing we put in, the displacement machine is on its way and we can't do anything about it. And those were the two areas that I think are still not resolved. We still have that staring at us, and so, having the conversations directly with the, with the school districts and having those, those numbers communicated without, you know, any side taking it personally. Here's, here's the formulas we're given, here's what we have to work with. But then also having, you know, I think having kind of the, we need the minds of, of these groups to come back and, and to government and give us recommendations and information on the knowledge learned, so that we have to make decisions and we are, are, we have more tools in the toolbox. If affordable housing is not going to be a, a useful solution for families that are living right now in, in our, you know, neighboring communities, then what is, right? And how do we keep that? Is it, do we have to create rent control policies? Is that the only way that we maintain a diverse community economically, obviously demographically, all the different ways? What is, what do we have to do? Because the way I'm seeing the numbers is, these are, this is, this is just a, the market rate for these, any property that's going to be at market rate is going to be through the roof, you know? And it is right now, it's going, it's going there as it is. I don't know if a few hundred rental units is going to be enough. I don't know if that's always on one, that's not on the, just Facebook, it's obviously on the city as well. So, these are the big questions I think we need to just get to and start having conversations about. Because if we don't, I think it's just, it's, it's like sweeping the full cookie under the rug, not just, you know, some crumbs. It's, it's a significant challenge that we don't have an answer to yet. The Catalyst Fund, we, remember we talked, and when I started, I remember I, I'll start it, was how do we just get a lot of different partners together, get funding and figure out a way to get regional housing? Forget about it being one city. Let's just get regional affordable housing projects in. And I think that is moving in a direction, but are there ways we can help push more partners into it and get more pressure on sites that we think seem pretty obvious and unused in our town that are owned? I don't want to put any vendor on the line right now, but... now, but there are some properties that are pretty big. Some of our biggest properties, I don't think they use all their property. Can we have much more aggressive conversations? We've had entry level conversations. There are sites that are flipping, USGS sites and things. Are there ways we could start seizing on those before it becomes commercial and we lose the opportunity before we even get started? So I'd love to have that conversation before the end of this. I know it's a lot of questions and I wish it was easier, but it's all big stuff. And big stuff with a lot of questions. So, thanks.
Thank you, Rich. Let me just add a couple of, of thoughts because certainly I had earlier asked many of the questions that I had were the questions raised by the, the public. First of all, let me, let me also express my appreciation to Facebook for being a part of the Connect Menlo process for the entire two plus years. And I think you attended most of the 64 meetings that we had on, on Connect Menlo and the General Plan Update. And I certainly want to commend that, you know, you're bringing forth a, a project that certainly fits within the parameters and principles and, and specifics that we talked about in Connect Menlo and the General Plan. And for that, I'm certainly grateful. I'm also grateful to Facebook for, I do believe you've been a great community partner to Menlo Park and want to certainly encourage you to, to continue, continue that. It is, having said all that, the, as, as you can well imagine, this is a city changing project. It's, it's, it's large. It impacts our city fundament, in, in very fundamental ways. And so I think our, our challenge is not all of those impacts were necessarily considered in Connect Menlo. Many of them were. Many of them were considered, but not necessarily solutions that came up. So, so I, I certainly look forward to continuing to work with, with you, with Facebook and our team as we go into the EIR process to, to address and tackle some of these, these issues. The, there were certainly a couple of things. I was, I was, when, when I received the initial letter that the Sequoia Union High School District sent to Facebook articulating their, their issues, I have to say, I was, I was pretty dismayed, not at the district, but, but, you know, I seem to recall when we were going through the Connect Menlo process, we had, you know, we, we had tried to and did outreach to invite districts to the table. And I know that they were interviewed as part of the fiscal impact analysis, but now as I look back, there were some shortcomings in the fiscal impact analysis around the area of capital. So I'm certainly hoping that we will address that. But I wanted to mention that because I wanted to echo what Councilmember Klein said, that if I'm paraphrasing this correctly, that, that we may want, you know, the, the typical processes, we go off and do the, and the consultant does the EIR and comes back after a period of time with the draft EIR. And then we sit down and talk, talk to the different agencies about how to address those impacts. I believe particularly given the interest and attention being shown by the high school district, I think it's an opportunity for us before the draft EIR is done to at least engage in an ongoing discussion. I know just recently, at the kind invitation of the superintendent, we had our first two by two meeting with not only the Sequoia Union High School District, but the Menlo Park City School District. And I welcome that initiative continuing and going forward so that we can have periodic meetings where we can discuss and potentially come to some solution. Hopefully, we can broaden that with, with, for example, other districts like the, like the Ravenswood District. Because it is a big problem. I'm not expecting Facebook to solve it. But if we can, through this dialogue, make progress and come up with some solutions, I'm sure Facebook is willing to be a, you know, fair share partner in, in that, in that process. And, and certainly would like to, to see if we can, we can do that in parallel to the, the normal EIR process. Another aspect, if you could put up a map of the, the overall campus looking from above as proposed. One of the, the aspects when we were going through, thank you, that, that's perfect. When we were going through the Connect Menlo process, we had envisioned in some of the early meetings that this site could potentially be, we called it informally, sort of an innovation zone. And we had in mind the idea of a college campus that had some open space mixed into it. I fully understand the rationale of that, of wanting to put the mixed use retail residential on the Willow side and then to create, I think I heard the term mentioned in the, in the presentation by Mr. Shigamatsu, was about a compact corporate campus. My only suggestion, and by the way, you know, I will defer any sort of architectural comments or anything to the planning commission because that's in their, you know, purview. And I'm certainly very impressed with, with it. The, the idea of in that, what is the blue zone, I'm a little worried that it's now becoming this secure perimeter. And I understand for security purposes, you may need to secure the buildings. But it becomes now this sort of walled off area, even if there isn't a wall. So the question is, is there a way to create, you've got sort of a lot of open space around certain areas like the north perimeter. Can, can there be some sort of a, like, as you probably recall from college days, a quad, you know, something that creates a little bit of a open space in the middle that is, has some accessibility to the public. I do think that will break the concentration in some way. And again, that's, this is only one council member's opinion. It's not, you know, and I, and I'm sure, but I just thought I'd at least, I think when you were asking some of the comments and feedback, that's, that's certainly, I, the one statistic that, that came up to me was, if I could find it here, was eight, there's 18 acres of open space, but only eight acres of that is open to the public. And while I appreciate that eight acres are open to the public, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can create some accessibility to some of the, the open space within that corporate side. And that may also address some of these issues of being able to create a flow through or for the Kavanaugh neighborhood or not, but at least trying to perhaps see if there's some, some way to break that up a little bit. The other and final area is certainly in the area of traffic and, and transportation. As I mentioned earlier, it would be really great if we can look at traffic and the traffic study, not only from this project itself, but on a cumulative basis. And if you'll allow me to, to explain that, you know, one of the first questions that I've gotten from residents and reporters of, did you know this will now lead to, you know, this project will now, cumulatively, there will be 33,000 employees of Facebook in Menlo Park, which is more than the population of, of Menlo Park. And so I, the point of that is, we do have to look at that, that traffic transportation from a cumulative standpoint. We may, as part of that, with your help, come up with different ideas and how that can be addressed. But I do think that's important to look at it on a cumulative level. And also related to that, and I'm looking toward Nikki Nagaya, our Transportation Manager, you know, one of the things, and this, this is to echo Vice Mayor Mueller's comment about the tie between this and the Transportation Master Plan. Later tonight, we have the information item on the Transportation Master Plan. And I noticed in the staff report that the committee was concerned or perhaps even opposed to the idea of studying further the grade separations and potentially a better connectivity between Bayfront Expressway to, to 101 at Marsh. And I'm very concerned that what this project, and again, I'm no transportation engineer, but, but, you know, looking at this project, we're obviously going to put a lot of pressure just on Willow Road, being able to cross and get for pedestrians and, and the new residents here, as well as the residents of Bay, of Bell Haven, being able to cross Willow. And Willow, if, if anything we can do, as we learned in the Connect Menlo project, 85% of the traffic on Willow is actually through traffic coming from Dunbarton Bridge to 101. So if there's a way to get, keep that traffic on Bayfront and get it to Marsh and 101, I think that helps offset some of the issues and traffic that we may have coming out of this project. So I do certainly concur that I do think this project will need to be a big part of taking into consideration in that, in the Transportation Master Plan. And hopefully, that too will be a parallel process that goes along with the draft EIR and will help to inform the draft EIR as well as vice versa. So I think that's it for me. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have a follow up?
I do, because I went back and looked again. And so these are items I'd like in the, in the fiscal impact report. And I'm, it's actually, these are, this is what we wrote back in November 2016. So I'm just going to read it because I actually think it's, we have to do that work now. So when 2016, we wrote, first, the general plan's fiscal impact report does not estimate the cost of capital improvement, infrastructure necessary to support the growth outlined in the plan. How many millions of dollars will be required to build the infrastructure? Second, the general plan does not set forth a framework detailing who will pay for the capital improvement infrastructure. Will it be the developers or Menlo Park taxpayers? Will new taxes be required? Will the county, region, state, or federal government commit to participating and paying for the infrastructure? Third, the general plan and its supporting documents do not detail when the infrastructure will be built. Five years, 15 years, or 30 years? I think, so just like back then when I thought that, I think that tonight, we need to understand all of those questions because it tells us whether or not the ecosystem is going to be healthy. Thank you.
And then one final point, and I apologize, I was just looking at my notes. Because this project is, is so large and, and city changing, I would love to see if, as we go through the EIR process, we can also collect what are best practices from other cities, not just, you know, locally. We heard tonight about, about the, about Google and the Mountain View Weisman School District. There may be best practices we can learn from. I, I know Oracle has, has a, a small high school within a portion of its complex. That's more of a, I think of innovation lab than it is a full school. But, but there may be some interesting lessons that we can learn from, from some of the other cities, whether they're here in the Bay Area or, or across the country, that are coming up with interesting ideas on how we can address some of these issues related to the, the challenges of, of the cost of infrastructure, whether it's school or transportation or what have you.
Absolutely. We heard that tonight. We're involved with many regional planning director groups that certainly include Mountain View and other communities that have similar large projects. So we'll reach out to them.
Okay, great. And with that, I think, as I mentioned, we will have another study session. We do want to make sure that Councilmember Keith can also weigh in on this. And, and so certainly this discussion is to be continued.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. If I could just, the, the topics and questions that, as you found, as we often get into this project, you, you get involved with some of the high level concerns, which are obviously very valid and need to be addressed. But if you could review those prior to the next study session related to the Paseo, to the bike ped network, the mix of uses, much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. And thanks to the applicant and everyone who spoke this evening. Appreciate it. All right. We'll now move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. And, and so I'd like to invite, we have a few speakers this evening. Phoebe Martin, followed by Varsha Sripadin. And I apologize if I, I'm mispronouncing names, but Phoebe, welcome. And Varsha, are you with her?
Yeah, I was getting asked together.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Hi, I'm Phoebe.
And I'm Varsha.
And we're from Laurel Elementary School. And we're here to discuss the ongoing problem of plastics in the ocean. How often do you use single-use plastic? Often? Not often? Never? Well, every time you use plastic, more, more and more of it ends up in the ocean. The effect? A huge garbage patch the size of Europe just floating around in the Pacific Ocean. And the worst part? Most people don't even know about it and some just don't care, which is why we need to do something about it before it gets worse.
One of the biggest problems is that plastic is harming and killing marine life. Every year, hundreds of thousands of whales, fish, turtles, and sharks die because of trash polluting the ocean. Plastic bags tingle and choke them, or else they're mistaken for food. One particular sea turtle named Nikki showed up at the Turtle Hospital in Marathon, Florida. After taking x-rays, the doctors found something fishy in his stomach. Guess what that was? Plastic. Plastic almost killed Nikki and has killed many others. And we, and we need to be more careful when we use it.
Did you know that plastic bags take around 10 to 20 years to break down? In a plastic bottle, maybe 40 years? No, 450 years. That's longer than our lifespan. The plastic you use will stay even when you're gone. Some good alternatives are paper bags, compostable bags, and cloth, reusable cloth bags that you can get at supermarkets.
So, think again.
Do you want to keep using plastic and harm our environment?
Or do you want to help people realize plastic just isn't worth it?
What can Menlo Park citizens do or change to help our ocean and environment?
More importantly, what can you do?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Phoebe and Varsha. Daniel Valverde, followed by Pamela Jones. Good evening, Daniel. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Otaki and councilmembers. My name is Daniel Valverde, and I'm here on behalf of the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. We first want to thank you for your leadership on housing. 1,500 homes with a minimum of 15% affordable is a great step forward, but the job is not done. There still needs, there is still significantly more office development than housing. There isn't enough analysis on the impact and expansion it may have on the displacement on Bell Haven and East Palo Alto residents. Kaiser Martin's previous assessment reported that direct displacements on residents in these neighborhoods would be low. Unfortunately, we now know that this analysis was wrong. Rents at Bell Haven and East Palo Alto increased two, two times more than they did in the rest, the rest of San Mateo County. Bell Haven leaders could share an abundance of stories about families doubling up, doubling and tripling up in homes now, and how over 40% of homelessness among children in Ravenswood School District impacts in community and educational attainment. But it doesn't have to be this way. The Housing Commission has recommended anti-displacement measures like mandatory rental relocation assistance that could reduce the displacement residents, displacement of residents through Menlo Park. We, we think this is great policy. The county and nearby cities have, have great models to work from, and we hope that you, you will consider moving the timeline of these measures. 12 to 18? Twelve to eighteen months isn't soon enough. Please let us know how we can be helpful, and we are happy to put together more information about these options. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Pamela Jones, followed by Cecilia Taylor. Pamela, good evening.
Good evening, council and staff. Several years ago, when we were doing the M2 Connect Menlo project, the first thing I asked for was some kind of a map, a diagram, something exactly like this. This is why I wanted you to stay. This is what we need to be able to see what we're doing. There's no way we can figure out traffic looking at a single plane surface. We need to look at it three dimensionally. So, we have schools here that teach architectural design. It would be a great class project for them, which wouldn't cost the city a lot of money. But we need to have this kind of three-dimensional design for all of the M2, as well as the Bell Haven and the portion of East Palo Alto, the Kavanaugh area, so that we can see, you can see the roads, then you can determine traffic. You cannot determine traffic by using the method that the engineers used, by counting cars. Okay? Counting cars does not give you any information unless you're looking at this type of structure. Right now, we have approximately ten projects in the M2 area and in Bell Haven. They either have been approved, and they have broken ground, or they're in the approval process, or if you read the Business Times, you'll find out what somebody's thinking about. Now, all of these projects are in silos, so where are they going to go? It's no wonder the Transportation Department can't give you any information on what traffic is going to look like. So I really encourage you to consider my request, because I believe if we don't have a map, we don't know where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Cecilia Taylor, followed by Julie Shanson. Hi, Cecilia.
Good evening, council, and thank you so much. Cecilia Taylor, Menlo Park resident. I wanted to bring up this concept of public safety first, and I realized that, as Ms. Pam Jones said about the ten projects that are happening near the Bell Haven neighborhood, that the safety measures have not been implemented. So it makes it very difficult for me to come and support any idea around development, because that needs to be done first. Right now, our students struggle to get to school, whether they have to use Willow Road, New Bridge, Ivy Drive, or Chilco, and I find that to be a problem. All students in the city of Menlo Park, all children in the city of Menlo Park deserve three basic things to improve their quality of life: love, nourishment, and education. A part of love is making sure they get to and from where they need to go safely. The nourishment is having access to high-quality food, and education, having access to high-quality education. Mayor Otaki, I appreciate you bringing up the Ravenswood School District in the last comment period. One of the challenges that Ravenswood is going to have is that no one is lining up to be in that school district, even though that's where a part of. I wish that the MA supporters would stay to listen to these comments about our school district, because we don't have the same type of support, and that's probably because we don't belong in the Ravenswood School District. So again, my biggest concern is about our children's access to the basic needs of life to provide high quality for them. And for me, that begins with education and public safety and love. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Julie Shanson, followed by Diane Bailey. Hi, Julie.
Good evening, councilmembers. I wanted to bring up something that we've been asking for, which is an amenities fund for the Bell Haven neighborhood. It was part of some of the agreements, the development agreements that happened. It seems to me that oftentimes, the council says, yes, we would like amenities, but if you provide them, and the city doesn't have to provide them, then we don't need to open a fund, because you won't give us any money, you'll just give us services in return. However, the Hotel Nia is opening, so there's going to be some revenue coming from the hotel tax. And we would like to see that revenue placed in a pot that is spent on the same side of the freeway where it's earned. And I believe a similar idea is being floated for the hotel on El Camino Real, so that the taxes from that hotel tax go into areas that are going to help its immediate neighbors. So I encourage you to consider opening up some amenities funds that will benefit specific areas of the city. And I also, just as a citizen who doesn't like to stay up till midnight, and I'm sure you guys don't either, I appreciate that you started the meeting a little bit early. I'm concerned that everyone's judgment gets to be impaired, not just tomorrow, but for a couple days, as you get over some sleep deprivation. And it makes it harder to then read all of the things that you have to read to be prepared for the next issue. So maybe coming up with some creative solutions, so that you're not stuck here for hours on end. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Diane Bailey, Menlo Spark. Welcome, Diane.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki and councilmembers. My name's Diane Bailey. I'm Director of Menlo Spark. We're working towards a climate-neutral city of Menlo Park, and I agree with Julie's comments. I don't want to keep you here with comments that I've already emailed, but I just wanted to make a very quick reminder related to climate change and the impacts that we're feeling throughout the Bay Area and here in Menlo Park, and what the city can do to really contribute to solutions, especially listening to those young kids talk about plastic pollution. It's really inspiring, and it also sort of reminds us that we're leaving a climate debt for our children. So, climate change is real, it's happening now, we're feeling the impacts, and it's serious, and we felt a lot of impacts last year. And I'm not going to articulate those now, but we definitely felt it with the heat wave on Labor Day weekend, with the wildfires that were so tragic in North County. And we're looking at really serious sea level rise impacting Bell Haven and the Bayfront. And there's so much that the city can do. One of the very biggest sources of carbon pollution in Menlo Park is transportation emissions, so our cars and trucks. And we have the opportunity to support statewide legislation that will phase out fossil fuel cars, and that's a really important step that we can take. And I think about nine to twelve other nations around the world have done this, but the U.S. is really slow to act. But California can, and so I've sent a number of comments urging your support for the Clean Cars Act of 2040, AB 1745, and I want to urge you again to support this bill. Again, it would phase out fossil fuel cars starting in 2040. This is new cars, we're not going to take away anyone's cars, but it is a transition, and it can't come quickly enough. And here in Menlo Park, there's so much we could do to support really proactive policy for electric vehicles with charging infrastructure, making it more commonplace, especially for people who rent or live in condos. We've heard time and again from people who rent that they can't drive an electric car, they would like to, but they don't have access to chargers. And I know staff is working really hard on this policy, we're really grateful for their work. I'm a little concerned that it stalled, we haven't heard a whole lot. In the meantime, the city of Palo Alto sent an encouraging letter, asking Menlo Park to move forward with this policy, and articulating that the policies in Palo Alto have been super successful. So, one policy in particular requires one EV charger per new residential unit, so for multifamily, and we really encourage forward movement on this policy here. We hope, if workshops are needed, we hope to see those go forward quickly, get back to the Planning Commission and to the council. We're seeing so many new developments throughout the city, and so we really need to see these policies in place to provide this critical infrastructure. And lastly, it's almost Earth Day, we can all celebrate Earth Day by taking climate actions. Please try our challenge, we're working with local schools, and we would encourage you to try the MenloGreenChallenge.org as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Diane. Adina Levin.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Adina Levin, I'm actually here with a Friends of Caltrain hat. Friends of Caltrain is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit supporting successful modernization of Caltrain in the context of a network of sustainable transportation, including the Dunbarton Corridor. And I wanted to address something that Councilmember Klein mentioned during the last discussion, which was that unfortunately, there was an attempt by one of the cities on the Dunbarton Corridor to utilize their local fund, their county funding for transit, bike, ped, and their intermodal station, and use it to widen a roadway in a way that would increase the number of cars on the road, instead of taking cars off the road. And the good news is that a collection of advocates, including groups that had helped pass Alameda County Measure BB to begin with, came to Alameda County CTC and said, hey, this is not the expenditure plan that we worked on and helped to pass, this is not in the spirit of what the voters voted for. And Alameda County CTC sent Union City back to the drawing board to work with bike and ped and transit advocates, and to work on something that might be more feasible. Be happy to send you an update on that. And the thing that I said in public comment there is, we east and west are linked by one traffic jam, and it would be great to see more collaboration between our West Bay Cities and the East Bay on a shared strategy to relieve congestion by taking cars off the road. And a similar comment, different topic, the pass-through traffic, a large number of them are going to Palo Alto. Palo Alto has transportation demand management programs, they just hired an executive director for their TMA, which is slated to expand from downtown into the Calav area two. And they have significant opportunities. Stanford gets fifty percent of their employees who come across the Dunbarton, not driving alone in cars now, using the buses and using carpools. And with some concerted effort, the Palo Alto locations, by providing some more Facebook-like benefits, have the potential to take a significant number of those cars off the road also. And I would encourage us to partner with Palo Alto, including the Palo Alto TMA, to utilize some of those approaches to help workers use those non-drive-alone commute methods, and therefore, help alleviate the congestion for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Adina. All right, and welcome, Councilmember Carlton. Appreciate. The next item we have is Commissioner Reports, NIC Bianca Walser, the Chair of the Complete Streets Commission, will present their quarterly report. Thanks, Bianca.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Complete Streets Commission. The last ten months now have been an experiment in merging bicycle and transportation. At our most recent commission meeting, I collected feedback from my fellow commissioners regarding their perceptions around this attempt. And I heard a lot of frustration on a number of different fronts. The Transportation Commission had been pushing really hard for more engagement from the city on safe routes to school, and it was explained to us that merging the commissions would free up staff time to make forward progress on safe routes to school. And, you know, we understand that there was staff turnover issues during this time, and we're very pleased that council has made safe routes a priority for 2018. But we were frustrated that so little progress was made in 2017, and we feel that, you know, we sort of didn't get the benefit of our bargain, and the time-saving argument just didn't pan out on our end. So, that's sort of the clearest example of the frustration that was communicated to me, you know, around sort of just shifting priorities, and the communication from staff around those shifting priorities was suboptimal, I would say. You know, I do want to clarify that Kevin Chen, who is our staff liaison, has been fantastic. And, you know, I don't want to ascribe any of that to them. I've really enjoyed working with him this past year. A number of the former bicycle commissioners expressed a lot of frustration with the decreased focus on specific bicycle projects, as the larger Complete Streets Commission had a sort of a broader mandate to address issues that previously would have just been seen by transportation, like parking restrictions or NTMP issues. And this diversion in their attention is really keenly felt, and the commissioners broadly, from both commissions, really felt that the city is better served by having a commission that is specifically dedicated to improving safety and comfort of bicycling facilities in the city. From an administrative perspective, you know, having such a large commission was kind of unwieldy. It made meetings very long. We made efforts to really streamline discussions, and to sort of just concur and sign on to other people's comments, but, you know, there are nine of us, and we're an opinionated bunch, and so meetings would run long, and that was a source of frustration. And none of us are termed out in 2018. One of us, I'm termed out in 2019, but that's it. So there won't really be a significant, we won't get down to the standard number until 2020. So that's a very long time to be dealing with long meetings and lengthy discussions. So, after all of that discussion, which was quite lengthy, because there were nine of us, we took a poll, just to establish how many of us wanted to continue as it is, and how many of us wanted to go back, if it was up to us, just to give you a sense of the commissions. We understand that the final decision, obviously, is in your hands, but we felt it was the most concise expression of our opinion, and so the poll was eight to one to return to the previous structure. So, that's, you know, that's my brief but spectacular update.
Thank you very much, Bianca. Do appreciate all of the hard work, trying, getting it together, and still, I know that you had a lot of items to work on, and so definitely appreciate keeping everything moving forward despite the sort of difficulties of a large group. Vice Mayor Mueller.
It's unsurprising, but I advocate you guys to go back to two different myself. So I support that. I think that's a smart, I think that's a good use of advocacy, to have transportation focused on transportation in the city, and the bike commission focused on bike commission. And more importantly, what I, and back when we made this decision, I expressed then, I'm expressing now, I think we get more commissioners. Both of those commissions always had plenty of people applying, and they were passionate. And the idea that we're somehow wielding them down and taking more people out, just isn't within what my understanding is the history of Menlo Park, and how we try to encourage civic engagement. So I'm excited to hear that, that you guys have reached that conclusion.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Right, thank you, Bianca. Oh, is there a, do you have a comment card on it? Yeah, come on, is it on? So, come on up.
Good evening, Katie Boosey. As usual, my workout clothes, kind of embarrassing. I'm also in the Complete Streets Commission, I'm speaking personally. I thought Bianca actually pulled her punches a little bit just now, and I want to add some color to the conversation about how Complete Streets has been working out. In particular, one item that we had also been pretty upset about in the most recent meeting was, there's been this kind of confusion about what things come through Complete Streets and which things don't. There was a recent issue on Menlo Avenue with a loading zone that might be relocated there, which would involve taking out some on-street parking, which to us would seem definitely to fall within Complete Streets purview. It wasn't going to come to us until Bianca requested it. It came to the commission, I was actually absent that night, but I had weighed in with Bianca ahead of time, and the commission vociferously, adamantly rejected the idea of putting nine hundred semi-trucks and other large delivery vehicles on Menlo Avenue, which is a pretty busy street. Figured, you know, that was a good recommendation that we were making to staff, and we didn't say, you should do this thing instead. We said, go work it out, but don't do that. So we were pretty appalled to see that that recommendation did not translate to the Planning Commission, and that it was glossed over in conversations with the Planning Commission. And this in particular, I think, the timing of having to have a conversation about how's Complete Streets going, right after this thing had happened. You know, there are nine of us, we're sitting in these meetings pretty late, not as late as you guys. And it felt as though our time was being wasted. And several of us who've been on bike commission, yeah, we were longing for the halcyon days when we were in the fishbowl, and we could be a little more casual, and we could work hard on our projects, and not have to worry about all this other stuff. But also, the bigger picture issue is, you know, what value is the city deriving from the Complete Streets Commission? And from the nine busy but committed citizens who are on the Complete Streets Commission, and from the staff who come and sit with us still pretty late at night? And I think that's a conversation that needs to be had at some level, because we don't just want to be window dressing, we want to help. You know, we're all very motivated. So, I was telling Bianca, it feels like it's kind of like a negative gestalt, you know, where the sum of the two commissions is somehow less than the parts. So, that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Katie.
Let's see, I'm going to be really...
Let's see, I'm going to be really grumpy if the last item goes really late, so I'll try to be super short. And I just wanted to speak up because I was the lone dissenter. And as the dissenter, I strongly agreed with a lot of the concerns that my fellow commissioners had raised, but also felt that, you know, one of the challenges prior was staff time, and we have, you know, we, we kind of run our staff ragged. And what they were doing, there were a lot of agenda items that were duplicate between both of the commissions, and they would come to both. And the Transportation Commission has become, as the city's policies have developed, you know, more holistically multimodal. So there would be, you know, the bicycle commission talking bicycle and transportation talking multimodal, and the same thing would happen twice, and we would be having our staff support the same conversation twice. And so while I thought that the long meetings were a challenge, and the, you know, it would be better to be able to have a focus group working on specific bike safety projects, I wasn't sure that splitting them apart would solve the problem, especially if it went back to the bad old days when we didn't really have good attentive staff support like Kevin is able to deliver. And we have to basically, you know, fight to try to get straight answers from staff, and, you know, have to go to City Hall and kind of stand there to be able to get a question answered, in the bad old days. And so agree with all the concerns, and not 100% sure that that separating will solve them. Thanks.
Thank you, Adina. Appreciate it. So I know this will be a future agenda item about that. And so certainly, we appreciate the input, and certainly the issues that, that, and I certainly think as part of it, I'm hoping we'll, we'll also be able to clarify some of the rules in terms of, you know, when the commission sees something, when it doesn't, because I know that was an issue even previously. So, so hopefully, when we have that discussion, we can, we can include that as well. And, oh, do we have another comment on this item? Yes, go ahead. So.
Hi, Betsy Nash, Complete Streets Commission. And I just wanted to say that the Complete Streets Commission is a great idea that I believe all of us believe in. We felt that it was not effective, as effective as a Complete Streets Commission as it was with the two commissions. It seems that it's worthwhile trying to do something to keep the two commissions definitely synchronized. If we can't have a successful, if the Complete Streets Commission is not as successful, and perhaps joint meetings regularly or something. But it was, the idea of a Complete Streets Commission is definitely a good one.
Great. Thank you, Betsy. All right. We'll now move to the consent agenda, consent calendar. And I believe, so first of all, I would like to pull briefly item G6, which is the Sheeper. The, are there any other items that fellow councilmembers would like to pull? And I also know Councilmember Carlton, you have a couple that-
I'm recused from G4 and G7.
Okay.
So pull those two out for a separate vote, please.
Okay. Got it. So is there a motion to approve the items except for G4, G7, and G6?
I'll move approval.
And I'll second.
It says I'm marked as absent. The motion passes three, two, one. Councilmember Keith is absent. Councilmember Carlton recused.
Wait, I don't think Councilmember Carlton is recused.
These were the-
These were the items except, so.
My apologies, I will repeat the vote then. So the motion passes four, zero. Councilmember Keith is absent.
Perfect. Okay, great. And next, let's do the two items that Councilmember Carlton is recused on, which is G4 and G7. Is there a motion? Or I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so clarification, just repeat, we are voting on items G4 and G7, of which Councilmember Carlton is recused.
And the motion passes three to one. Councilmember Carlton recused, and Keith is absent.
Great, thank you. Item G6, so I, I wanted to pull the item just simply because I just, Derek, welcome, just to have a brief conversation, because in past years, this is a big deal. This has been a big deal. I just felt that we ought to at least talk about it. That, and, and I do appreciate and will certainly support the revised professional services agreement with Team Sheeper. But I did want to at least be able to tell the public, because this in the past has been kind of an issue, just the story about how this has become, changed into a different type of partnership agreement. And so it will still continue as Team Sheeper running the pool, but instead of Team Sheeper paying rent, and I know previously at one point it was something like 10,000 or 11,000 per month, if I recall correctly. But with increasing costs and, and issues with challenges on the enrollment side, now we're moving into a, essentially a, a sharing of profits over a break-even level, correct?
Correct. That's correct. Good evening, Member Otaki and members of the council. Just to, I guess, you pretty much covered it, I think, and generally in that summary. We, and the council members will be aware of this, essentially, Team Sheeper approached the city. Essentially, the model that we were following, we had the luxury of for the 12 years of having a lease model, which the city was able to benefit from, which has, with an aging facility, has not, has, and over the years, with some of the volatility of enrollment, as well as with expenses, particularly labor costs going up, it just was not a model that was going to be sustainable. And we, we see evidence of that even within our own operations. Essentially, we then wanted to pursue, we were asked to pursue a different model, which is actually more similar to models that are held in other municipalities where you use a private contractor to provide aquatic services. So.
Okay. And I did notice in the staff report that the rates which are set for, are based upon comparable rates from other communities. So we aren't charging higher or lower right in line with, with, and that is part of the contract. So, correct?
That is correct. I mean, we will continue to monitor that. It's built into the contract to make sure, it's the expectation that the rates will continue to be market rate, and we will evaluate that as part of an annual report that we would receive.
Okay. And also finally, is I know that, just to, to also, that there have been recent conversations with, with Solo, and making sure that, 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 that has been addressed any issues and concerns. And so we, that's been addressed as well.
That is correct. We've, we've actually had meetings. We've made sure that Solo, as our other swim team that contracts with Sheeper Force Pool Space, that we were looking at trying to meet as many of the requests that were made. And I've had a meeting as, as, as late or as early as last week with their representatives. And it, it seems that they are supportive generally of the new agreement.
Okay, great. So before I move to approve the revised contract, I do want to make a plug to, to folks in our community, that if you have teenagers or returning college students looking for a summer job, there may be positions available.
We're looking for people. Yes.
Yes. So.
Can I just correct one item? The, the rent that we had received from Team Sheeper was about $3,800 a month. It was much lower than, than you thought.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate clarifying that. Great. So I'll go ahead and move to approve the revised and new agreement with Team Sheeper for the operation of both Burgess and Bellhaven Pools, beginning April 1st, 2018, through August 31, 2020, with options to renew. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
It still says I'm absent. If, if you'd like to voice your vote. I vote yes.
Okay. Do you need to sign out and then sign back in, or maybe?
No, it keeps fixing itself.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. I think we've addressed all-
We need to.
The motion passes four, zero. Keith is absent.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our first public hearing for the evening, which is Resolution Number 6429, declaring the, to vacate and abandon a public utility easement at 1049 Almanor Avenue. The, our city manager, Alex McIntyre, is recused from this item due to proximity of his residence to the subject location. Nikki Nagaya, our Assistant Public Works Director, will introduce the item. And Nikki, I don't know if you have a presentation, or whether I should just go ahead and open the public hearing. I'll let you.
So I just have some brief introductory comments, and then I'm happy to walk through some slides if you would like. But we can also use those just in reserve for questions. So just briefly to summarize the item before you, we have a request to abandon a public utility easement for a proposed redevelopment of a single-family residence at 1049 Almanor Avenue. It's at the corner of Van Buren, just in the, off of the Menlo Oaks area of Menlo Park. In January of this year, the council adopted a resolution of intent to abandon the public utility easement. And then earlier this month, in March of 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and found it consistent with the city's general plan and recommended approval as well. So essentially, the request before you is for abandonment of an existing public utility easement that currently includes only a sewer line that West Bay Sanitary District operates, maintains. So staff is recommending that the, the public utility easement be abandoned and then rededicated to West Bay as a sewer easement. So we would condition the approval of the abandonment before you tonight, subject to West Bay's acceptance of a dedicated easement for the sewer line. So if you have any questions, we're happy to walk, walk through more detail. We have some maps and things you can show as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that, because I was trying, when I read the staff report. So there's a larger easement, we're abandoning a portion, a portion that is six feet or some, some number of feet. But then there's a remaining out, the remaining part that, that essentially West Bay will, will have. Is that-
Correct.
Trying to be a layman here.
So the, there's a number of property lines that cross the parcel today. So the applicant has requested that the lot be merged. And to do that, we need to look at relocating the easement. So there's a portion that would be abandoned, and then it would be relocated closer to the street, so that the sewer line still falls within the easement, but it's not as centrally located to the parcel, and moves it away from the proposed structure that would be constructed on the property.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and before I open, public comment, have you received any correspondence or concerns expressed by neighbors or any issues?
Yep. So no, no concerns from neighbors. We did have some correspondence with West Bay Sanitary District today. And so that's where we wanted to be clear that we're, we're recommending that the approval tonight be subject to dedication to West Bay of the revised easement. And so with that clarification, they were, they were in concurrence with the proposal.
Okay, I'm making a note of that right now. All right. Is there any clarification questions or?
Yeah, I just have to ask because it's obvious, but I, I think moving it is fine. It's the obvious thing to do. Why do we abandon all other rights when we do this? Because it's just like when you have a sidewalk, and then you have a chunk of a sidewalk that's missing. It's bizarre that we have this strip of the same kind of rights with one little chunk missing, where we, where we take, because it's, it's PUC, it's, it's all public utility all down the street, and this one chunk only becomes one kind. And I asked staff, and they said that that's just because we have a policy that when we move things, we abandon all rights except for what we need. But I think we also should have a policy about weird hodgepodge ways that we have things ordered. And I don't know, I, I just thought it was very odd that we would have one chunk different when it's obviously along a continuous strip.
And just to clarify, you're saying, because, because we're addressing one parcel, but not necessarily other parcels?
Yeah. It is exactly like taking one chunk of the sidewalk out. And I just think it's odd that we start getting patchwork quiltish. I, I totally see moving it. I mean, that's obvious. But I was just wondering, on the, the abandonment of all the other rights, it just, I just worry about it getting weird and complicated as we do these things.
Okay. Nikki, any?
Yeah. So on the screen before you is a, a map of the, the vicinity of the project. So this is 101, kind of running across the, the page, Almanor Avenue here, and the property in question is 1049. Bear with me as we get into utilities, which is not usually my area of expertise. But the green line that I'm walking through on the map in front of you is the existing sewer line. So the easement that exists runs along that green line. Because it's parallel to Van Buren Road, and in such close proximity, if we were to relocate any other utility lines in, in this area, we would typically place them in the public right-of-way in the street, as opposed to in the existing public utility easement where the sewer line is located, which then would be on private property. And so we would be having to access those utility lines on private property even with the easement. So in this case, we felt comfortable recommending abandonment for this particular property, but could apply the same standard to these other five homes on the front edge of Van Buren, from Henderson all the way up to Menlo Oaks Avenue, where the sewer line then transitions to public right-of-way, which is this kind of green strip on the map. So it's really a, a potential future item for these other five residential units along that section, but a fairly limited scope. And we would anticipate applying a consistent process to those, those five properties if they wanted to pursue abandonment in the future.
Which leads me to my follow-up question, which is, if we're going to tear something up, it seems a lot more cost-effective and a lot less impact to the residents to tear up a sidewalk, rather than to then go tear up a street.
So this, this existing sewer line is not located under the sidewalk. It's, it's on the, the private property which we then have the easement over. So it's, it's essentially in someone's side yard in, in that case.
Okay.
Great. Vice Mayor Mueller, did you have any question? Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing, and, and let me ask if we have any public comment cards?
There is one.
Okay, great. Okay, great. David, David Crouch, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, members of the council. I support the abandonment. I'm the owner of 1049 Almanor, so I'd hope I'd support it. I want to give you some brief history. I think it'll answer your question, Commissioner Colton. The land was zoned in 1929. Were you able to bring up the graphic? Is that possible, if you don't mind? Where Van Buren runs today, there used to be a row of lots facing 101. And around the 1950s, when 101 was widened, Van Buren was put in place. And what happened was -- oh, sorry, let me back up for a second. When it was zoned in 1929, there were a number of six-foot easements put down through the back of Almanor and also down the side of Almanor. Sorry, where Van Buren's running. And there's also a four-foot easement put on the other side of the fence for those properties as well. That made a complete 10-foot easement, okay? What I've -- with the rezoning in the 50s and the widening of 101, those lots on Van Buren were almost all taken out. What was left was 11 and a half foot wide strip of land that basically ran on the side of the lots, my lot on Almanor and essentially where Van Buren is. I have applied in merging that 11 and a half feet strip of land to my lot. In doing so, there was a six-foot easement on the left side of that parcel line and a four-foot easement on the right. Actually, I swapped that around. What I'm trying to do is actually, first of all, move that four-foot easement fully into the setback. And also, in doing so, the reason why I'm asking for re-categorization, essentially is what it is of this easement, is since 1929, PG&E has not put anything down that strip of land. In the late 90s, Cal Water redid their piping, which did run down the easement, and they placed their piping out in the street of Van Buren. So Cal Water's taken care of. PG&E hasn't had a need. And the last one is West Bay Sanitary. West Bay Sanitary has their sewer running down the side of my property. That's staying, of course. The obvious part of it here, two things. First of all, is all I'm asking is basically to not allow the establishment of any new utilities in that strip of land and to put them in the right-of-way, which is just a few feet away, running down the right side of the property. And to address your question, Commissioner Colton, you're talking about a hodge -- I'm simply the first person who applied. And I think others will follow. And also, as -- I'm not fortunate enough, I'm sorry.
Nikki.
Nikki said, when new public utilities are put in place, they're going to be put in the city's right-of-way. I believe the sidewalk that's there today will stay. I don't see why it would be taken out. Thank you.
Thank you, David. All right, with that.
I'll move to close.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I'll second.
Great. And do we have by acclamation closing the public hearing? Yes? Okay, so by acclamation, we've closed the public hearing. Now we're back up here. Is there a motion or a?
Yeah, it actually makes sense to me. I think the rest of the neighbors are going to follow as soon as this is clear. So I'll move that we, you know, declare vacation and abandonment of the public utility easement at 1049 Almanor as per the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, great. And I believe that motion should include that it's subject to the satisfaction of the West Bay.
West Bay.
It's conditioned upon granting the sanitary sewer easement to West Bay to be recorded prior to the recordation of the resolution abandoning or vacating the public utility easement.
So moved.
As the city attorney said, incorporate that into the motion. And before we vote, Councilmember Colton, I do agree with your point that to the extent that in the future we may be able to do multiple ones to avoid the hodgepodge, I think that's a good idea. But given that what's on the table tonight is this parcel, let's move forward. So shall we? Are we ready to vote?
The motion passes 4-0. Keith is absent.
Great. Thank you. Next public hearing, Item H2, review and provide direction on a proposed ballot measure for enabling -- for an enabling city charter for the November 2018 election. We have Assistant City Attorney Kara Silver will introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So I'm going to be talking about the placement of a charter measure on the November ballot. The agenda that we will review tonight is a brief description of general law cities versus charter law cities, the pros and cons of becoming a charter city, what needs to be in a charter. Then we will review the proposed charter language that we have drafted and attached to the staff report for this hearing. And finally, we will discuss the process for becoming a charter city. So in terms of the distinction between general law cities and charter cities, both cities, of course, derive their power and their authority from the California Constitution. With respect to general law cities, however, the general law cities are subject to the laws that are enacted by the state legislature. And general law cities must follow those laws. On the other hand, charter cities derive their municipal affair powers directly from the Constitution. And in the area of municipal affairs, charter cities are able to adopt their own rules and regulations without being subject to state legislation. However, in the area of statewide concerns, charter cities are essentially very similar to general law cities in that they are both governed by state law. So really, we want to focus in on the distinction between statewide concerns and municipal affairs. As I mentioned before, in the area of statewide concerns, there is no difference between being a charter city and being a general law city. Some of the key areas of statewide concerns that are involved, we have traffic and vehicle regulation. So if Menlo Park were to become a charter city, they couldn't decide that they wanted to have green stop signs because that's something that's governed by the state and both general law and charter cities need to comply with the state vehicle code. Similarly, licensing of members of a trade or profession. The state sets forth the process for that. And as a charter city, Menlo Park could not impose stricter requirements for practicing a trade or profession within the city. Tort claims, which are lawsuits that are filed against cities, are governed by the state's government code and the same rules apply to both general law and charter cities. Also, many of the transparency laws, for instance, the Ralph M. Brown Act is equally applicable to both charter cities and general law cities. The California Environmental Quality Act is applicable to both. And conflict of interest rules are, of course, applicable to both charter cities and general law cities. Exercise of the power of eminent domain is something that is prescribed by the state and courts have found that those processes must be followed by both general law and charter cities. Same with labor negotiations and peace officer and firefighter procedural bill of rights. However, where charter cities do have more flexibility is in the area of municipal affairs. And this is an evolving area. Municipal affairs are determined primarily by the courts. There is some reference in the Constitution about what municipal affairs are meant to be. But generally, this is a determination that courts have made as to what a particular municipal affair is. One of the most common municipal affairs that we talk about is the process by which city contracts and public works projects are entered into. And so this is something where many cities have adopted their own procedures for qualifying bidders, for awarding contracts to particular bidders, for setting up solicitation processes and that type of thing. So that's an area where there is some flexibility. Also, the area of financing public improvements. General law cities must follow the procedure set forth in the state law for, for instance, setting up a business improvement district or a assessment district. Charter cities have a little bit more flexibility when it comes to setting up a process for forming those districts. Compensation of city officers and employees. Many cities have found that council member salaries, for instance, are set by a prescribed formula under state law based on population. And a vote, an ordinance needs to be amended each year to increase council member salaries. Many cities that have converted to charters recognize that they want to encourage other people to serve on the council. And so they have decided that it's important to pay council members a decent salary so that they can actually afford to serve on the council along with all of their other commitments. This is also an area, though, council member compensation, where there has been some restrictions and some safeguards placed on council's ability to increase their own salaries. Because while in one sense, it is good in that it attracts more diverse council members, on the other hand, of course, it can be abused. A common area traditionally for local control was land use and zoning decisions. Unfortunately, this is an area where the courts have taken back a lot of the local control and have ruled that in big-picture planning issues such as housing, affordable housing, that type of thing, that currently, those types of issues are deemed to be statewide issues rather than municipal affair issues. Initiative referendum and recall procedures. If Menlo Park were to transition to a charter city, they could adopt their own referendum or initiative process. For instance, they could lower the threshold number needed for signatures to pass an initiative or a referendum, make it easier to pass an initiative or referendum, in other words. Taxation, we've talked about in the past. There isn't too much of a distinction in this area anymore. Both charter cities and general law cities must comply with the state constitution in terms of taxes being put to a vote by the people. The one area that still is an advantage for charter cities is that charter cities are able to adopt the documentary transfer tax, whereas general law cities do not have that ability. In terms of city government structure and elections, these are also areas where the courts have upheld charter cities' ability to change certain -- change their governmental structure. For instance, a charter city could form a strong mayor form of government, whereas a general law city could not. And certainly, we've talked about the issue of elections in the past that with a charter city, you can convert two different election processes like cumulative voting and ranked choice voting. And those options currently are not available to general law cities. With respect to charter city disadvantages, one of the key disadvantages is that it can be cumbersome to make amendments to the charter. The charter must be voted on, of course, by the people. And likewise, all amendments must be voted on by the voters. Also, with certain charters, depending on the policies that are desired by the community, once you have a charter, it's not a be-all, end-all. You still have to implement subsequent ordinances. So for instance, if we were to convert to a charter city in order to implement a different type of voting mechanism, we would have to have a community process on what type of voting mechanism to have and then adopt the implementing ordinances. So there still is work to be done after a charter is adopted. Also, many people worry about giving the city council too much control. This was an issue that came up in the Bell scandal a number of years ago, where Bell, which was a charter city, paid their city manager, I think it was a half a million dollars or something like that in annual salary, and also overpaid council members as well. And as I mentioned before, as a result of Bell and other cases, certainly, there have been legislative safeguards put on that type of behavior. But there still is residual concern that having a charter does give the council more authority over municipal affairs than it would have as a general law city. And then finally, one of the issues we wanted to flag, and I believe we've talked about this over time, is that the area of local municipal affairs, or sometimes it's called home rule, evolves over time. It's a pendulum and it floats back and forth. And it is dependent on court decisions. And sometimes, we cannot predict what is an area of municipal affair or not. So we did -- again, it's not static. And so we did want to flag that issue for you. In terms of what needs to be in a charter, at a minimum, the charter must contain an enabling provision declaring autonomy over local affairs. A charter can be simple. It could theoretically just contain one article incorporating that enabling provision. It can also be more complex. And some of the older charters that you see can be, you know, up to 25 pages with lots of different provisions. And it was typical in the earlier days when charters were being drafted to incorporate a lot of the policy and not only a framework, but the actual implementing regulations into the charter itself. That -- and the charters that have been adopted more recently have recognized that flexibility is important. It's also become more difficult to amend charters. And so the modern charters that we see generally tend to be more simple. And the implementation is typically done through ordinance rather than charter. But it can be done either way. And then finally, as I mentioned before, charters and amendments must be approved by the voters. So I wanted to now just review the first draft of the Menlo Park charter that we have put before you this evening. It has eight articles. Article one is a declaration of autonomy over local affairs. We call this the enabling provision. Article two codifies the council manager form of government, and it's fairly typical to, in a charter, describe the form of government that the jurisdiction has. Article three deals with fiscal matters, and it's a broad declaration of local control over all fiscal matters. And it also clarifies that the city will continue to pay prevailing wages on public works projects. That's something that, as a general law city, Menlo Park has done in the past. And with SB seven, which we have also talked about in the past, since there really isn't a, an ability for charter cities to pay prevailing wages, we would recommend that the city continue its practice of doing so and codify that in the charter. Articles four through seven are broad declarations of areas of traditional local control, which are revenue retention, land use, elections, and fines and penalties. And we have included this, really, it's a transparency provision. It gives a perspective to the voters that these are the areas that you would expect to see some additional regulation in at a later time. With an enabling charter, we haven't decided exactly what provisions the city wants to, to adopt, but it is, it flags the issues in a transparent manner. And then finally, article eight is just a boilerplate provision regarding interpretation of the charter. In terms of the charter process timeline, the, the state law has a procedure for adopting a charter. Two public hearings are required, and there has to be 30 days between those two public day hearings, between those two public hearings. Then, before formally adopting the charter and placing it on the ballot for voter approval, the council needs to have a 21-day hold where the charter language is made available to the public for review and comment. Following the 21-day hold, the council can act any time after that hold period. However, there is an election deadline of August 10th, 2018, when the ballot measure must be delivered to the county clerk. And then the election would be on November 6. So in terms of the council action this evening, we would recommend that the council receive public input, discuss whether you want to pursue this enabling charter as we proposed. If so, review and give us comment on the draft language. And then we would also ask for any, any input on a public outreach plan for this charter. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Kara, thank you very much for the presentation and your hard work on this. If I, if there's no clarifying questions, why don't we open the public hearing? And I do know, let me shift my screen over, I do know we have folks who'd like to speak on it. First this evening is Karen Grove. Karen, welcome, followed by Jen Woolison, and then Pamela Jones. Hi, Karen.
Hi, good evening. On my comment card, I said I wanted to talk on this and on the next item. Shall I come up a second time for the next item?
You mean for?
For the BMR guidelines? H three.
Also, the item H?
Three. This is, we're doing H, oh, sorry, H, yeah. The one that's up there right now.
Okay, so we're on H two right now.
Correct.
But, but yeah, you'll be able to speak on that item.
Okay. All right, so just H two right now. So I would just like to ask the council to clarify the process. Maybe, maybe it's clear to you. It's not clear to me. If we adopt an enabling charter, and as Kara just outlined, the details, it's good that it's not going to be all detailed out in the ballot initiative. The voters would, let's say the voters vote yes on an enabling charter. When the charter is fleshed out in detail, the city council will put forth an ordinance perhaps saying that we will do ranked choice voting. Will the voters then have to vote to approve that ordinance as an amendment to our charter? Or when we vote the first time, do we give city council the authority to write ordinances that amend our charter and give up our, you know, our right to vote on those amendments as they get implemented through ordinance? So I don't know if you can answer my question as I stand here.
What I will do is I'll, I'll ask it at the end.
Okay.
Because I think it's a very good question.
So if, if our initial vote, if the enabling charter relinquishes, relinquishes the voters' rights to review and amend changes to the charter as we go forward, then I would oppose it. But if we have a chance to, to vote on changes to the charter as, as it gets implemented, then I would support it. So I hope that was clear.
May I ask one clarification? You do know that right now, we have the ability to affect the elections code, which we just did last week?
But we do not have the ability to do ranked choice voting because we're a general law city, right?
We could have. Actually, we do have that right right now to do that. We do, we could be sued for it, but we have the right to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jen Woolison, followed by Pamela Jones.
Good evening again. I want to echo Karen Grove's concern about kind of relinquishing control with this enabling charter, so that, I mean, we're talking contracts, we're talking lots of different issues. And for each of those issues, the voters should have a say in it. And that's not the intention of the citizens who were originally interested in this latest wave of charter interest. Our interest was specifically around the elections process, and that's why I would urge you to consider Steve Chesson's suggestions of the two article charter that narrow the focus more to the election issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Pamela Jones, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening again, Pamela Jones. I'd just like to reiterate what the two previous speakers discussed. I also looked at some of the emails that came to the city on chartering number 21-ish, and 15 of them directly supported, 15, 16 of them directly supported chartering, but not one of them mentioned enabling charter. Several of those did mention voting system because they would like to change to voting system in a future, in a future time. And then five of the emails specifically stated going to a two article charter with the article number one dealing with election. And if we did that now, then that piece could be changed a lot simpler later on because we already have that, that one article in our charter. I too share the concern that it appears as though, I may be wrong, but it appears as though that there would be an extraordinary amount of power given to the council, whereas if you wanted to change one of the items in the list of areas, I think there was nine in the, in the paperwork, in any one of those areas, that you would enact an ordinance following hearings, of course. But regardless of what the, the public said, you could still pass the ordinance even if we didn't like it. And in order for us to change that ordinance, we would then have to collect signatures and put it on a ballot. And that just seemed kind of like a backward system, if I'm understanding it correctly. So hopefully, you'll listen to what's been written, and as I said, I support what the two previous speakers stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Lynn Bramlett, followed by Cecilia Taylor.
Good evening, council. I wanted to touch on some of the points that I made in my email to you. I think a too broad charter is a very bad idea. And I'm not worried so much about your increased power. I am about the staff's power. I don't think we have enough checks and balances in Menlo Park, and we don't include the public enough in a meaningful way. Tonight, we heard people during the Facebook presentation about what could improve meetings happening without involving all stakeholders. We had a commission here where they talked about dysfunction, information not coming. I, I could elaborate based on my experience on the library commission. So we, we don't have a system that benefits the public, and ultimately, that's who should come first here. So as I mentioned in my report, the, the report, my email to you, the staff report was written in a very biased and slanted way, designed to get your agreement. And I hope I elaborate enough in my email for you to see my point. You're busy, you need objective information. I think this too sweeping charter is a bad idea. I agree with Steve Chesson. Let's keep it limited to begin with. If there is a need perhaps for one other provision, then form a committee, give the public input into what's said. I do also want to point out that some of these cities that do have, that are charter cities, they have provisions to increase the public's voice in local democracy. They have sunshine ordinances, they have ethics committees, some of their citizen groups, they're more meaningful. When you talk to people serving on some of these commissions in Menlo Park, they will say it's meaningless because the real decisions happen outside of the meeting. And that should be, and maybe you discuss trivial matters or you're informed of it. And it just shouldn't be that way in this town. So as one, in addition to, I'm against it, I would join a group working to defeat it, and I know that others would too, if it's too broad. I think we need to look at, how are we involving our public? Do they have a meaningful role, and what needs to change? Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Cecilia Taylor, followed by Adina Levin.
Good evening again, council, and thank you so much. Cecilia Taylor, Menlo Park resident. I say ditto to all of the previous comments. I believe that now is not the time to put charter city in front of the community. And also, I believe that the power needs to stay with the residents in Menlo Park. And if we're going to do a type of rapid process, I believe it needs to be around traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Adina Levin?
Evening, council members. Adina Levin, speaking for myself. And I'd like to echo some of the previous comments who talked in support of a two article charter, where this idea was instigated recently to begin with, came out of the discussion about going, having to go to district elections because of the lawsuit. And having representation specifically for a heavily minority neighborhood is a good thing that, that district will have representation. But at the same time, by going to district elections, we lose something where city council members need to appeal to voters from across the city. And we risk having, you know, a more balkanized policy and civic environment. And so there's other voting mechanisms that can only be done without a risk of lawsuit by becoming a charter city, and that was the goal of having a two article charter. I'm pretty skeptical and concerned about the much more broad charter city. The larger cities, San Francisco, San Jose, Los Angeles, will be a charter city, and they have a lot of, you know, goals and resources to really customize all the laws for the need, and they have, you know, staff to do with it, they have the resources to do with it. Menlo Park, with, you know, 30,000 people or 35,000 people with, you know, whatever, we're still a small city. And we do not have the resources to deal with thoroughly customizing all of the state's laws, and I think that invokes a whole bunch of risk. And so I would recommend a two article charter to allow us to potentially look at some of the election alternatives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adina. Are there any other cards? Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
A second? Second, thank you. By acclamation, are we closing the public hearing, everyone? Yes. So the public hearing is now closed. Bring it back up here. You know, certainly, I think in, there were a couple of questions about the process and, and about whether or not we're, you know, the relinquishment of control. Can you clarify a little bit on that? And I appreciate your input.
Sure. So, once a charter is in place, I don't know that the, the voters are relinquishing any authority. The voters always have the ability to amend the charter, and they always have the ability to advocate for a particular policy through an ordinance. This is a small city, you know, many initiatives are brought forward through, you know, community request, and I wouldn't suspect in a city this size that that would change. There was a question about whether, if a charter were enacted and then we were to want to switch to ranked choice voting, would the charter have to be amended? And there are different ways of doing that. You could amend the charter to allow for ranked choice voting. If you did that, that would lock in ranked choice voting. And then, in order to change that, you would need a vote of the people to amend that election system. Another way to implement ranked choice voting would be, once you have a simple charter that allowed for local control in the area of elections, you could adopt an ordinance that would implement ranked choice voting. If the voters didn't want ranked choice voting, they could either, you know, informally request the council to change the ordinance. If that were unsuccessful, they could always referend the ordinance or bring forward an initiative to adopt another form of voting system. So I don't think it's really, the implementation of a charter does not seem to take power away from the voters. They always have the ability to, you know, elect council members and to exercise their right to adopt ordinances through initiative or referend ordinances that they don't agree with. There was also a question about just general opportunities to amend the charter. Charters can be amended either through the council putting on an amendment to a charter or the, the voters themselves could make a, could initiate an initiative to amend the charter.
Okay, so, so again, just for clarifying for me, so nothing precludes a future council. Let's say an enabling charter was, was passed around the elections area, but it's, but it's very simple and it doesn't necessarily prescribe a method. We go, a future council then goes through the process of, of appointing a commission or much like we did, but has a little more time to come up with, you know, a recommendation to the council. The council would implement that recommendation through an ordinance, but nothing precludes a future council to then... a future council to then potentially in the future, seek voter approval to either amend the charter, to make that in effect permanent in the future, or even potentially change it. The, a future council does have that, that ability. And to make any amendments does require, to the charter, would require voter approval, correct? But it has to be in, in those particular, it's even-numbered years, correct?
So, in terms of amending the charter, you can actually amend the charter at other elections, unless it relates to, I believe, employment issues. I think that needs to be voted on at a general municipal election, even-numbered years. But just regular amendments can be voted on at other elections.
Okay. Another sort of comment that came up somewhat related, and is this sort of concept of simplicity, you know, the, the very limited number of items, and obviously, the recommendation has been, keep it simple, just focus on the election provision. But certainly, I read in the, as I was reading the staff report, there were other provisions that made a certain amount of sense to, to include, for example, codifying the city manager Give me the sort of pros and cons about, you know, I certainly know when we entered this process, the thought was, was, you know, our intent is around the elections area. Just provide us some input on that.
So, there, there's kind of a continuum when it comes to drafting a charter. On the one hand, you can have a very simple enabling charter that has one or two provisions that gives, and I'm using the term, I do use the term "broad authority," but as our presentation indicated, there really isn't currently, under the current state of the law, much of a difference between general law cities and charter law cities, because the courts currently are interpreting municipal affairs very narrowly. And, but we do expect that over time, the pendulum will shift again. But, so, when I say that, that an enabling charter has, gives the city or the council broad authority, that's in the context of the legal framework, where the courts don't really see that the city's authority is very broad in this, in this area. But, given that, so on the one hand, there's this, this simple enabling charter, and then the other end of the spectrum is what we almost refer to as a restrictive charter, that will have a lot of different provisions in it, and these provisions are codified, certain practices are codified, and that actually serves as a limitation on the city, because you can't change those processes unless the charter is amended. So, those are the two bookends, and then, you know, somewhere in the middle, you have a, a charter which will have maybe a few different, a few key areas that are codified, that are hardwired, that you don't expect to change over time, and you want to codify those in the charter. And it's really a community discussion about what things the community feels comfortable that should stay permanently. And of course, if, you know, the more permanents you have, or it does become more difficult to change, and from a legal standpoint, of course, we are always, we like to have flexibility. And so, it's, you know, we would advise that it's, it's an important aspect to preserve flexibility in the future. And if you want to implement a practice, it can always be done by ordinance. It doesn't have to be done through the charter.
Peter, can I, excuse me, mayor, can I just jump in with one comment? And that is, I think that the issue concern, if you will, with respect to what Mr. Chesson has proposed, is it's really not a charter. It's not varying anything from state law. State law, general law, cities can have district elections, five districts, as you've proposed. And then, it basically says, we're really not a charter city, because we're, we're going to comply with all the general laws of the state of California. So, if you remember, our original thought, or my original thought and recommendation was that if you wanted to do a charter, that we should establish a charter committee, and that's like a two-year process, and establish, what do we want in the charter? And those are things that we want to vary from state law, and, and be very specific. Or, the question came up, what if we just adopted an enabling charter that allowed us to adopt laws that were varied from state law? And that came from the council. I think it was council member Mueller that raised that question. And we went back, and, and I went over it with Cora, and she did the research and investigation, and said, that really is what most cities do, and it's very broad and enabling, but then it has certain restrictions in it, or details about certain kinds of procedures that might be hardwired in the charter. So, for example, what's proposed is to hardwire five district elections, and in order to change that, the only way you could change it is by a vote to amend the charter. But it's really because the essence of what that two-charter provision is, is that we're just going to comply with state law, and in fact, you know, any change from state law would require a vote going back to amend the charter. It's really not a charter. So, if, and again, I'm not advocating that you go, that you proceed with a charter, but if you're going with a charter, it would seem to make sense to either make it enabling, or somewhat enabling with specific provisions. But as I said at the time, we don't have the time to do that, and put it on the ballot for this year, to go through and do the normal charter process.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah, so, so I appreciate the clarification that the council has the ability to pass ordinances now, and doesn't take a vote of the people to do that, and it's just some basic stuff there. But calling a spade a spade, look, I think the concerns, I think we're still in the politics of the district elections. And what I think, what I'm concerned about is, I understand the concern that, hey, we just created, so, does it look like we're trying to get around the California Voting Rights Act? Right? I mean, that's basically what the concern is, and that's why Steve wrote, what he wrote. And I can see where people would say, okay, well, you just created a district for Bellhaven, so now you're going to try to take that, you're going to give yourself the ability to take that away in two years, or whenever this gets passed by the public. And so, my question is, is it possible to say, we're going to comply with the California, but the problem is, when we were looking at the California Voting Rights Act, I think there was clear public sentiment, and also, and interest, in, okay, can we give Bellhaven a district, and then the rest of the city go to ranked choice voting? And we were told, you can't. Or you, or just leave it the way it was at large, and we were told, you can't. Because the California Voting Rights Act was very prescriptive, had to be the whole city. And so, my question is, can you do a charter that says, California Voting Rights Act is applicable in any jurisdiction where it's applicable, any part of the city where it's applicable, you're going to give it its own district, and then the rest of the city, for the time period that it's applicable, and then the rest of the city, you have the enabling of power, just like you do now, to put together elections the way you want?
So, the California Voting Rights Act is a matter of general concern, statewide concern, and it preempts local law, so we couldn't, through a charter system, adopt a charter that violates the California Voting Rights Act?
Great. So, they still, so you would still have Bellhaven with its own district if we passed it?
No, no, no. We, so you're, you're focusing on creating one district, and that's with the California Voting Rights Act? That's not what it basically says. So, you can have a Voting Rights Act, unless, if you have any at-large elections at all, it is subject to a Voting Rights Act challenge.
Whether you're a charter city or not.
So, whether we have a directly elected mayor, and six council members, whether we have, you know, one, two, three district-elected members, and, you know, two at-large elected members, if you have any at-large elected members, you have a potential Voting Rights Act challenge. The only safe harbor is straight-up district elections.
All right. So, even if we go to being a charter city, we, we go to being a charter city, and we say Bellhaven gets its own district, and the rest is going to go to ranked choice voting, we're still potentially challengeable by?
Correct. Because then you have a part of the city that's only able to vote for one council member, and you have other parts of the city that can vote for multiple council members. So, so you basically have created a system where, where some people are somewhat disenfranchised, because they can only vote for one council member, and they're treated differently than other members in, in the city.
Okay.
And so, so it's, it's that opening for a Voting Rights Act challenge.
Okay. I'm going to excuse myself temporarily, so.
Oh, I see. I think I was talking about it.
So, I think, so to just kind of bring back the, the issue, and that is, if you're not comfortable in, in proceeding with an enabling charter, if you think that there are sufficient concerns in the community, that that's granting the city council too much authority and power to change laws, then, you know, my personal recommendation is to then just defer the whole charter to a future council, a future date, and, and go through the normal charter committee or commission process. But I would remind, just one, because I've been around here forever, as you know, where issues of concern have come up, that have been significant concern in the community. We had leaf blowers that went to a referendum immediately, it qualified for the ballot, the council repealed it, it didn't have to go to an election. We had a referendum on the dairy project, qualified for, gathered enough signatures in, you know, in a very short period of time. The council, we ended up not rescinding it, because the applicant basically put the project on hold, so the approval was suspended, never went to a vote, was never rescinded, it was just suspended in perpetuity. The third one was an initiative, which was having to do with the specific plan area, where, again, there was an issue of sufficient concern, that residents gathered signatures and placed a ballot measure on the ballot. And those are the ones that are coming to mind. I think there's another one, and I just, I'm getting older, and it doesn't always stick. But, but so, you know, where there have been issues, you know, the voters in Menlo Park have been able to get the signatures to bring it up. I, when, when issues are of significant concern, or enough of a concern, the council typically doesn't adopt ordinances with, that the community disagrees with. I mean, I, oh, the other one was when the council, a council made significant changes to the approval of homes on non-conforming lots, on substandard lots. And made it easier to put, build two-story homes on the smaller lots that were currently subject to use permit. And, and basically, there was a switch of the council, and the council, and the next council came in and rescinded the, that ordinance. It was their first act on their first night to rescind that ordinance. And so, that didn't have to go through a petition drive for a referendum. There was another one that was also around residential guidelines, I think, that went either to a referendum, or started with an initiative, and, and the council just backed away. So, it, again, that, that's not to say, go forward with it, but it's just, it's historical information to be aware of, that councils typically don't go crazy, and they don't typically adopt laws that are not acceptable within the community. And if there's a large enough group that is opposed to it, the council backs off, they rescind it, they're voted out of office, you know, there are a lot of different ways that it's happened to affect the change that the community wanted, that is not so unlike a charter amendment, or, you know, adopting a charter. So.
All right. Council member Klein.
Yeah, I, you know, I appreciate, you know, the thought that's gone into this, and I, I actually do understand why we would look at, at creating a charter, because I do think there's more flexibility in the voting structure. I mean, back as far as Andy Cohen, we've talked about ranked choice voting, we were, these were things we were interested in doing, but have been unable to do so. So, you know, I think there is some, some attractiveness to it, but I also, I think, I think we're going to create work and problems for ourselves by trying to create something efficient in changing a charter that is not an efficient process by nature. And I would say we should, if we think these are valid merit, you know, these merit a kind of restructuring of council, we should look at it, but we should give it its full process. And I think any abridged version is going to create more problems than it's worth. That's where I stand now. And, you know, I do want to say, the mistrust of council, I mean, Steve Chesson's, four of his paragraphs could be cut and pasted into every city in the country. So, there's mistrust of elected officials. This mistrust could lead to this. Power, you know, centralizing power creates this problem, so it's, this is universal. And I think we, we just need to be cognizant of that.
All right. Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm kind of trying to figure out a way that we can put on the ballot a charter that's simple enough to, to give us the flexibility to come up with an election process that fits best the city of Menlo Park long-term, and yet, doesn't give the appearance that we're overreaching, or trying to, to, or be perceived that we're overreaching in terms of powers and authority. You know, I, I, when I was looking at it, certainly, you know, many of the articles and the sort of around municipal affairs seemed to be fairly straightforward, I didn't really see anything. But then, I get into the public works contracts, and it talks about the city being exempt from provisions of the California Public Contract Code, and, and from the provisions of any other California statute regarding public contracting. And then, as a non-lawyer, you know, I kind of look at that as, well, maybe those were, you know, good, good provisions, and I know later, there's the prevailing wages section and restriction. I get concerned when I, when I was reading it, that I, that, and then it goes on the city shelf, the power to establish standards, procedures, rules, regulations, regulate all, you know, and everything. I don't, do we, I guess, I'll ask the simple question, do we really need that? If our intention was really to have the provision on elections, do we really need to get into all of the other, other issues? And is that best left for a future council to add that as a charter provision? I mean, I, again, I'm trying to get, I don't want to give the, I don't, if our intent is trying to, to enable, particularly around the elections area, the charter, I'm, I'm worried that we're giving the perception that we're also giving us broad reach in some of these other areas, which isn't necessarily our intentions, so.
Understood. And I think the problem is, is you're not even creating any enabling language around elections. What is proposed is basically nothing other than a charter that says, we're going to follow general laws, and we're going to have five district, five districts, you know, elected council members. There's, there's no?
I'm not talking about Mr. Chesson's proposal, I'm talking about the elections provision in this current.
Right. So, if we were, if we were going to... Right, so if we were, if we were going to, allowing us to do that by ordinance, so my understanding is that the concern is that the speakers would all want the voters to approve any change in the election system in Menlo Park and not have the council do that. So it, their objection is to each one of those powers and not having broad powers where the council can adopt a different election system by ordinance.
Right, I understand that was the concern expressed.
Right, so, so if you--
But I'm, I'm perhaps articulating, I think, a different concern, which is, which is that there could be a perception that many of these other powers--
No, no, I understand that. So, but I'm, I'm just saying, if we dropped everything else and we didn't modify, I mean, first, I guess, we're saying that we're going to follow the general laws of the state of California and all of these other areas, but in the areas of elections, the council's going to have authority to adopt an ordinance to adopt a different election system. I mean, is that what you're suggesting?
That's, yeah, I guess that's part of what I'm, I'm suggesting as opposed to necessarily, I mean, we talk about utilities, utility franchises, public financing, purchasing. I don't see any of those necessarily being powers that aren't already granted as being one way or not. And so why do we have it in this?
I'll give you an example. We run into problems with the public contracts code all of the time. And where we want to disqualify a bidder that is not dishonest, hasn't committed any felonies, hasn't, you know, the, the standards for throwing them out is the lowest bidder, but they don't have adequate people to perform the work. They don't necessarily, but we can't technically disqualify them as the lowest quote unquote qualified bidder under state law. And if we had, if we weren't obligated to comply with that, we could provide our own standards that would allow us to be more careful in who we select for the, you know, our low bidder. And, you know, we currently can't do design-build type projects. And sometimes, you know, the cost of doing the detailed plans and specifications and the bid package and putting out the bid package costs almost as much as the work does. And we can't do a design bid because under state law, we're not allowed to do that. And so there are provisions that we would love to have the authority to bring, you know, potentially ordinances to the council to vary some of those kinds of things that would allow us to do that. You know, when we did the gymnastics center with, or the gymnasium when Ariaga came in and offered money, I had to be incredibly creative in my interpretation of the public contract code to allow us to do that when it made absolutely no sense to go out to public bid because he was picking up, you know, two-thirds of the cost of, of the gymnasium. So, I mean, so that's an area. If you, if, if in the future you wanted to do a documentary transfer tax, the tax requires a vote of voter approval, but we can't even do that except if we have a charter. And, and so, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, most charter cities have a documentary transfer tax that's more than the dollar ten per thousand. And when, you know, the price of houses is going up substantially as houses turn over, the city could receive documentary transfer tax. There, there are a number of things like that that we don't have the ability to do because we're not a charter.
Okay, so what you're saying is there are some good reasons to have some of these other provisions in there. That's, that's basically what I'm trying to ask here--
Absolutely, but, but if there's a--
And so if we're going to do it, let's--
Right, but if there's a concern and, and on the public that that grants the council too much authority, then some charters dial those provisions into the charter and kind of outline the philosophy or the procedure or, you know, various provisions in the charter itself, so it's not as broadly enabling. And it has some limitations and restrictions on what that authority is that's being granted. And so, again, that's the charter committee process that, that one would go through to say, okay, we want to modify the public contracting in certain ways and that might be written into the charter or the enabling language around what that is might be written into the charter. In elections, it might specify that, you know, ranked voting is allowed or these different systems might be allowed coupled with district elections or whatever. But, but so, so that's kind of the normal charter process is figuring out what those things are, what the community wants to incorporate into the charter and be specific as to what those provisions are that are in the charter. I mean, that's, you know, and then periodically there are charter amendments that go through to clean up or modify, you know, the charter to make changes because something isn't workable. So when it's hardwired in the charter, if it's unworkable, the only way you can change it is by taking it to the voters.
Okay, all right, thank you. Councilmember Carlton.
All right, as I've gone through this, by the way, I really like the document that you put together. I don't know if it was you or a member of your staff on the characteristic general city law charter city and how this impacts Menlo Park. Was that you? Oh, I like the way you did this because it really shows the difference and, and how everything's been narrowed down. And in the staff report, it says clearly that given the current encroachment into local control by both the legislator and the courts, the distinction between general law and charter cities is, is this much. There's, there's really not that much difference. As was pointed out, we already have the ability to change how we do voting now. This isn't like, although there are some restrictions now we didn't have. But I guess my, I guess where I struggle is, I've worked with, with my colleagues for five years and I know that the problem is that sometimes it's easy to look at city council as a thing and not as people, not as dads. And I believe in my heart that everyone up here, we may vote against each other sometimes. We may disagree, but I respect them that they're thoughtful and their hearts in the right place for wanting to do the right thing for Menlo Park. But then I think myself about 10 years down the line, we have no idea who's going to get elected. They could be crazy people, you know, and this is, and this is a thing. So as much as I understand how it could actually help the city function in many ways by having the charter done this way, I understand the optics. You know, I understand that it's, there are very good reasons that have been outlined for doing it. But if I'm a busy mom that's only half paying attention what's going on, somebody knocks on my door and says, the city council have gone crazy. They're voting themselves all kinds of rights. You know, even though I see in here that really there's very little, if we, yeah, okay, we could raise taxes, but we have to go get a vote for that. We could do charter amendments, but we have to get a vote for that. We, there's, there's a lot of choices that we have that aren't really choices. Like, you know, of course, we're going to pay prevailing wage because otherwise all of our funds get cut off. You know, there, there are a lot of lists and lists and lists of, of things that there's no difference in this area. This isn't an issue in Menlo Park, you know, as, as we go down these things. But I do worry about the optics. You know, even if it is the right thing for us to do, it could be spun in a way that is awkward. What can we do? What is your suggestion on whether or not we have something more clearly laid out? We have certain areas not included. What can we do to reassure the people that have concerns that this is for the good of the city and that it's not a power grab? Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying and I, I don't think there is any way you can provide the assurance other than by, you know, doing a more--
Educated.
A charter committee process that is driven by people that, you know, that is a broad enough part of the community that go through what would be good things to include in our city charter, where do we want powers and authority? And, and so it's a community buy-in process. I think part of the problem and concern is this is coming on too quickly. People don't understand it, it's too broad. And, and so then people get concerned because it's a change, it's a difference. It's, you know, potentially, things could happen and then it could require more effort on the part of the community to undo it or repeal it. And so, you know, those are all legitimate concerns, you know, and so it's, it's not to belittle those concerns at all. They're, they are heartfelt concerns. And so either, I mean, it seems to me that either you're comfortable going through with this process knowing that there will be opposition to it and, you know, and that's bringing up an issue in the same election that you're having your first district elections, you know, or you basically table it and, and for, if, if a future council or this council, you know, wants to start the charter process, which is a whole nether project that we don't have budgeted or anything else, then it seems to me that you put that out. Because, again, I think the concern is, is that unless there is something where we are varying from general law, it's really not enabling anything and therefore it's really not a charter.
No, I understand, I understand. And I also understand, because I have read through this very carefully, that it really doesn't give us that much more wiggle room for, for doing things than we have right now. My other concern is that we've heard from five people. And I got a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls from people who really want to do the charter city and really want to see ranked choice voting. And sometimes I worry, no, no offense to the people that spoke, but I do worry sometimes that when you have a handful of people in your face talking, it seems like that's the majority when those are the people that just came that particular night. And I think all of us had emails and a lot of phone calls of people who did think this was something that they wanted for the city. And, and not in two, four years. You know, they wanted this to be able to be enacted for them to vote. And I'm concerned about the fact that, I want to be responsive to that. And I, I do understand the concern and I do understand the optics. I also understand that we can do the enabling charter and then work on, on refining those details later. We can do the enabling charter that enables the ranked choice voting and then we can have a team refine that. Although I agree that will take more staff.
There's no action on this item tonight. Everyone's given their input. So, and I think Councilmember Keith is going to want to weigh on it.
So is there--
Yeah, this is review, sorry, just looking back. This is review and provide direction.
Yeah, so that if there was a different form of charter that you wanted to come back, we would incorporate whatever your direction is tonight so that when we have the next public hearing, it has what you want in it.
I, I really want to do more research.
Yeah, so while I respect this draft as, as, as an alternative, I, I would like to see another alternative, which is, for lack of a better term, simplified, or--
Less enabling.
But, right, right. And, and I'd like to ask you to sort of take another look. Bring, still keep this, this draft. And we're certainly going to keep the, the input, the draft from Mr. Chesson as, as, as an alternative. But I'd like to see something that might be perhaps as, as simple or as, you know, I really am trying to avoid the, the, the misinterpretation that might be out there, the public that we're trying to overreach. So how you do that, I'm not, and so I'd like to use this time--
We'll put our heads together and we'll bring back something that may not achieve that goal or it may.
Absolutely, but I don't want to give up on it yet, right? So let's, let's, and plus have a chance for--
So I think we'll come back with kind of like three concepts. So this one, what Steve Chesson proposed, it might need to be tweaked, fine tuned, cleaned up a little bit, but conceptually that concept. And then a third concept that is kind of something in between.
I, I, I agree, something, whether it's, it's more simple, more targeted, whatever, to basically address the concerns.
Great, okay. Thank you, appreciate it. And thank you to everyone who, who spoke on this topic this evening. All right, item H3, our third hearing and final hearing for this evening is on the below-market rate program ordinance and state density bonus. These are chapters 16.96 and 16.97. And we have, joining Kara Silver at the, at the staff table is our Housing and Economic Development Manager, Jim Cogan. So, good evening.
Good evening, council. As you mentioned, my name's Jim Cogan and I'm joining Kara Silver with our Assistant City Attorney tonight. We're bringing forward to you, the council will remember that on March 13th, we had a study session to talk about changes in our BMR guidelines and ordinance, which were made possible by the passage of AB 1505 in last year's legislative session. This is the first part of the changes that we discussed with the council on the 13th, which had to do specifically with the ordinance and the BMR guidelines. We'll be coming back to the council after going to the Housing Commission and Planning Commission to discuss the changes to the RMU District in the Bayfront area. So this is focusing just on the changes that need to be made to start applying our inclusionary zoning to rental housing. And with that, I will turn it over to Kara to walk us through the ordinance changes in more detail.
Implementing, in a change in law that was recently passed by the state legislature. And so in terms of the legal landscape, prior to 2009, cities were permitted to impose inclusionary housing or deed restricted housing requirements on both ownership and rental housing projects. However, in 2009, there was a court case called Palmer versus City of Los Angeles that held that under the Costa-Hawkins Act, which is a state law regulating rental, rent control, cities were no longer prohibited, were no longer permitted to impose inclusionary housing requirements on rental housing projects. So we, as, as a city, we amended our guidelines to eliminate the rental housing, inclusionary housing requirement. And for a period of 10 years, there were no rental housing projects that had a BMR component. Then in 2018, as part of the 15 bill housing package, the governor signed AB 15-- Then in 2018, as part of the 15 bill housing package, the governor signed AB 1505, which legislatively overrode the Palmer decision. And so now cities are permitted to impose inclusionary requirements, provided that they have an implementing ordinance. So this is a summary of our current code. We have inclusionary housing requirements for three types of developments. We have one for for-sale residential housing projects. It's a sliding scale for zero to four units. There is no inclusionary housing requirement. For five to nine units, projects must provide one affordable unit. For 10 to 19 units, projects must provide 10% of the market rate units as an inclusionary requirement. And for 20 or more projects, there is a 15% inclusionary requirement. Currently, as I mentioned, for rental projects, there is no inclusionary requirement. And then our commercial inclusionary requirement is really payment of a fee for projects of 10,000 square feet or more. And there are two different fee structures, depending on whether the project is an office and, or a R and D project or another type of commercial or industrial project. What we're proposing today is to restore the inclusionary housing requirement for rentals. What we're proposing is that the percentages for the inclusionary requirement continue to be based on the number of market rate units like we have for the ownership developments and as the code provided prior to the Palmer decision. We also are required, under state law, to give the applicants the right, only in the rental projects, to provide an alternative means of complying with an onsite requirement. So we must provide them the option to pay an in-loof fee or satisfy that requirement some other way. So we are incorporating that into the ordinance and the guidelines as well, as required by state law. And finally, we, as Jim indicated, this inclusionary requirement will apply citywide, but we do plan to make amendments to the RMU zoning district as a separate project that will go back to the Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and will probably come back to you in the summer. Then we are also proposing that the housing guidelines be amended with corresponding requirements for restoring the inclusionary housing for rentals. And then at your direction at the study session, we are clarifying that the in-lofe should be based on a standardized cost approach. And that cost approach will approximate the cost to provide an onsite rental unit. And we will adopt a resolution that provides a standard one-bedroom cost for a particular type of neighborhood, but each project on a project-by-project basis will adjust that cost depending on the project that is being proposed and the neighborhood in which it's being proposed. While we are going into the BMR ordinance and making amendments, we thought that we could use this opportunity to make other cleanup amendments. One of the issues that we are, that we have talked about is to clean up a provision in our code that deals with how to treat multiple adjoining parcels under common ownership and control. And so we are proposing to deal with that ambiguity by clarifying that in situations where a property is applying for an initial application, that the property should disclose all other contiguous properties under common ownership and control and then include those properties in the BMR housing agreement that is ultimately approved by the city council. We are also recommending some changes in the density bonus section of the code. There have been some recent amendments to state law and so we're proposing that the ordinance be amended to deal with how to address displaced affordable rental units when a density bonus project is proposed. We're also proposing to clarify that the density bonus under the BMR ordinance cannot be combined with the density bonus in state law. That's how staff has been implementing the ordinance, but again, we want to clear up a possible ambiguity there. And then finally, we are recommending that the affordability mix be given some latitude. And that is specified in the BMR guidelines, that any inclusionary units be deed-restricted to low-income households. However, that doesn't reflect the true regional housing needs assessment, which provides for very low and moderate income units as well. And we need a mechanism in place to provide for those units. And so we are proposing that the developer be given some latitude to propose a mix of affordability levels, but that that mix ultimately be approved by the council and that it be equivalent to the underlying requirement. So this proposal, both the amendments to the ordinance and the amendments to the guidelines have gone through board and commission review. On January 10th, the Housing Commission reviewed the proposal and recommended that the council adopt the changes. On February 5th, the Planning Commission reviewed the ordinance and the guidelines and recommended that the council approve. And then, as Jim mentioned, on March 13th, we went to the city council primarily to review how the in-lofe should be calculated. And we have incorporated the council's input into the current draft of the guidelines. So with that, the staff recommendation is to introduce for first reading the ordinance amending chapters 1696 and 1697 to adopt the resolution updating the below-market rate guidelines and to make a finding that actions are exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Great. Thank you. Unless there are any clarifying questions, I don't see any lights on, we can now open the public hearing. I do know that we do have some speaker cards. Let me shift my screen over. And I think Karen Grove is our first speaker, followed by Rich Trumpler.
Good evening, again. I have very simple comments. I appreciate the very clear presentation. It could be because it's the fourth time I've heard it, but it seemed very clear and I would just encourage you to adopt the changes. It's really important that we implement our inclusionary zoning. It's one way that we can guarantee dispersed affordable housing throughout the city and take advantage of development that is happening and the land that is there. And we're not growing any more land, so just urge you to adopt it and thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Rich Trumpler, followed by Satees Kadivar.
And I want to, as Rich is coming up, I want to thank everybody for hanging in here. We've got three public hearings tonight.
Of course, and thank you for your time and your consideration. Certainly appreciate that. Rich Trumpler with the Soprato Organization. And we appreciate the intent of the new BMR guidelines and ordinance before you tonight. In my review, I would ask the city to consider several points of clarification to the guidelines. That would help support the development of very low, low, and moderate income housing units. When I was reading it this evening, I think there was three areas that I suggest could be clarified. In 4.1.2, I would suggest that rather than utilize a rent cap, that we use the objective HUD standards that other cities have adopted, and I think it's more objective and it'll be easier to implement, so I offer that for consideration. And then in 11.1.1, I asked the question, do you also need to refer to very low and moderate in terms of rent levels or income levels, I should say? And lastly, can Table A and B be made a little bit more clear? It was unclear to me. I had to do a little research on which was low, very low, and moderate, and I think that would ease the implementation of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rich. Satees, good evening.
First off, I would like to say that I think we made a lot of progress in the right direction based upon city council's discussion at the last meeting and the ensuing staff report and some of the proposed changes to the guidelines. When it comes to affordable housing, we need to give the city and staff the flexibility to work with individual property owners in order to get units built onsite and across income levels. Very important consideration here, and it was discussed on the March 13th meeting, and it is addressed a little bit in the proposed changes, is around flexibility for the moderate level. In affordable housing circles, this is often referred to as the missing middle. This is a group that is really the core of the workforce and of essential services, people like teachers and public servants. And we heard directly from the school district about this need tonight. The city's Housing Element Annual Progress Report shows just how underrepresented this group is. The number of units identified as needed at the moderate level is 142, and just one has been produced in the last four years. That's one out of 142. Let's compare that to the other income levels. We've produced 59% for very low, 25% for low, and less than 1% for moderate. That's why they're called the missing middle. The main reason the missing middle has been completely overlooked and will continue to be overlooked unless we do something about it, is that there is really no financing or subsidies available for it. Because of this, it makes perfect sense for private developers to take it up where the pro forma is a real concern, and especially so for smaller developers on smaller parcels. Which leads to my second point, accommodating smaller developers, which council members expressed their support for last time. In the BMR guidelines, there are a number of places where we segment out requirements based upon project size. You just saw it earlier on the slides, such as where we define the number of BMR units, all the way to how inspection processes work. We've got these really granular segments at the smaller numbers. We have different requirements for projects that have zero to four units, five to nine, exactly what we just saw. That's it, though. We go from 20 and up. Those are the, that's how we sort of categorize the size of these projects. We need, we need something at the level of, at the level of 20 to 100 units, or say a parcel that is an acre or less. I'm throwing out ideas. But this is important because of the 15% rental BMR requirement and trying to find a way to make these smaller projects pencil. So what I'm suggesting is that we directly address both the issue of the missing middle and smaller developers together. A simple solution is to allow projects with 100 units or less, or projects on less than an acre, to be able to have their allocation of BMR units all be at the moderate level, or if we want to frame it more generically, all at a single income level rather than across multiple income levels. I'm keenly interested in this because I have a project, as you know by now probably, that can increase the supply of moderate income units by around a dozen, which would equate to over a 1,000% increase on a very small, 1,000% increase on what we have existing. And this is being done on a less than an acre property that happens to be half a mile from the new high school. Please give yourselves and staff the flexibility and tools to make this a reality. And everything Rich said about the details, I totally concur with. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Satees. Any other speakers, speaker cards? Okay. Bring it up here.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by acclamation. Are we closing the public hearing now? I see nods all around. So the hearing is now closed. Come back up here. I know Vice Mayor Mueller, I think I saw your light first, and then Councilmember Carlton, do you have a?
I don't care. If you want to come.
I just had one question, and I think it's, I'm confused a little bit about how there's only one mid-level, because tonight in Facebook's presentation, close your ears, Karen. Tonight in Facebook's presentation, they said that they had contributed to mid-level housing, and I remember them having to do that as part of a development agreement.
On Haven.
On Haven. So how can we only have one?
So that was a little before my time, so I'll invite Bill to correct me when I'm wrong, but I believe that those units, in complying with our BMR guidelines, were all at the low-income level.
Correct. Yes.
No.
Sorry, I'm sorry, they're all at low-income level. I did the agreements.
Well, okay, then how could they say teacher housing?
That is at Hamilton. That's on, in, they bought, they paid down rents in some units on Hamilton in the Greenheart project.
Okay, so that's.
Not Haven.
So we have created more mid than one.
So the clarification there is that the ones on Hamilton don't count.
Correct.
Because they're not deed-restricted for 55 years.
Okay, fair enough. Right. So they're, they're just for that limited period of time.
Okay. I totally get the point about the missing middle, whether we call it workforce housing, however we address that. I totally get that. I also, any way we can get people to build rather than giving funds. I know that, I saw in here, they talk about city will calculate a standardized cost estimate. If the developer elects to pay the in-lofe rather than provide the units onsite, basically the extra costs will be incurred as a way of encouraging, yes, we want them built. We don't need more money into a fund. We don't want the buyout. Also, in terms of transit impact, the other drum I beat often, so I apologize for repeating myself, but I'm really passionate about as many units as possible as we build these BMR units being available for people in Menlo Park. There's so many people within our city already that need affordable housing. I see multiple generations having to live together uncomfortably, you know, in terms of quality of life. These are our tax dollars going to support our affordable housing, as much as we can make that available for our people that live and work in Menlo Park. I know that there are legal restrictions, which I've been told about regarding the funds, but how about this idea? When we talk about transit impact fees, one mitigation can be that they live in Menlo Park already, or they work in Menlo Park so they can, they can walk. You know, I'm putting it out there that I encourage creative ways, that we can legally have the BMR housing available for people that already live and work in Menlo Park, because I think that does also address the needs of our residents as well as potentially addressing traffic issues as well.
So we do have a preference in our BMR guidelines for live or work in Menlo Park. And then, and now we are, we're coming back with preference in the RMU that will be hardwired in the RMU when the RMU comes back to you, for the Bell Haven, for people who live or have been displaced from living in the Bell Haven neighborhood, for BMR units in the RMU District.
I remember that, but I also remember that, because, and one of the things, I want to thank staff, because one thing we have done, whether it's a new project, like we did with the Veterans Administration, where we put in 60 units for them, whether it's the remodel on Willow, where we took some not-so-great apartments for the elderly, we increased the number and made them really nice for people. And then the Impact Development from Greenheart and others, you know, we've got hundreds of BMR units, either now available or coming on shortly, which I think is great. But I also remember having the debate with Willow, that we could only have a certain percentage of those houses for Menlo Park people.
Right, so that had, that had to do with our funding.
That had to do with our funding.
So it was tied, it was tied to our funding. So these are our programs, so we have the guy. So these are our programs, so we have the guidelines that, that have the preference for people who live or work in Menlo Park for all of these BMR units.
That's, that's wonderful, but we still have another unit coming up on Willow that is a similar structure to the development that we had for the, for the elderly. And when we do have things like that come up, I'm not disagreeing, I'm agreeing, but I'm saying we also have other projects that come up where we are restricted in our ability to have that preference. And anything that we can do creatively to keep that preference for the people as we've defined, I encourage as these come forward, because not every deal that we do is structured the same, and there are, and have been limitations on that line. Other than that, I think that it's a good proposal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I just want to bring up the, the HCD request for the section 4.1.2, just to clarify that point. Is that?
Yeah, so I, I think Rich sent an email, I think, to the mayor that got circulated back to me eventually, and I looked at the language, and we may need to tweak the language. So my thought would be, is if you have any other points or, or recommendations or issues based on what you heard tonight, or your own review, give us that direction on the guidelines. We can adopt the guidelines at a later date, since the ordinance is, this is just the introduction of the ordinance. Then you'll adopt it at the second reading, and then we can bring the guidelines back then, or even within the 30-day effective period with some tweaks to the guidelines, but with whatever other thoughts, comments you have.
Okay. Thanks. And then, I guess it is the complex, you know, situation of looking at how do we incentivize, you know, the, you know, the inclusion of, you know, let's say, moderate housing in a smaller project, right? And what can we do to, is there an exchange we could make, or there type of things that can happen?
Yeah, so, I mean, if, if that is the direction, we can look at that and come back with some language recommendations for you. I mean, the, the concept that was raised was one that we actually thought about as well.
Okay. All right. That's all I had, really. It's pretty clean. I want to get it done and, and get it in right now, so.
I'll move, we pass it.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, so your, the question that you had was related to the suggestion by Satees about the missing middle combined with the definition.
Right.
And so Bill is saying that you'll come back with, with the suggestion that.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, so we'd request that you adopt a motion to introduce the ordinance tonight, and then we will come back with modified guidelines to address the comments having to do with sections 4.1.2, 11.1.1. We'll look at clarifying or the tables to make sure that we're clear.
Explaining, okay, boy.
You know, what, what's what. And, and then we'll also look at the idea of potentially modifying the requirement for smaller projects with either, you know, moderate or a mix of, that gets us.
Right.
Some moderate.
Without creating the loophole for larger projects.
Correct.
Right.
So moved. Just to clarify that point, so we were planning on bringing this back for second reading at your next meeting, and then we have a session scheduled for May with the Housing Commission to review a number of BMR guideline issues. So if it would be acceptable to the council, what we could do is wrap up those follow-up issues that you've identified tonight with the Housing Commission review and bring all of those back to you in a couple of months. But meanwhile, we can implement the inclusionary component of the guidelines either tonight or when you adopt for second reading the ordinance.
Through the, through the mayor?
Yes.
I think that's great. My concern is, I'd like to see this done as quickly as we can, because I don't want someone to come up with a project and then have this not be implemented, and then we miss that opportunity for more affordable housing. So it makes me kind of jump a little bit when I hear, we'll bring it back in a few months. I realize that it needs to go through the proper channels and all that, but as, as, knocking over.
We can bring it back, we can bring it back sooner. We can't bring it back next week.
No, 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 absolutely not.
But we can, we can bring these three changes back sooner.
I just wanted to impress that I think all of us would like this to be done as soon as we can, through the correct, you know, reviews, but I don't want it to slip through the, through the cracks of time and have us miss any opportunities.
We can do one and three tonight.
Yeah, you're going to introduce the ordinance, you're going to make the findings that the action is exempt from CEQA, and then we're going to take your, you're not going to adopt the resolution adopting the BMR guidelines tonight.
I'll move the first reading of the ordinance, and that we make the finding, the actions are exempt from CEQA.
Then I'll second that.
Okay, great. There is a motion in second. Shall we vote?
The motion passes for a zero. Keith is absent.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so there are a couple of information items. Oh, I do see Nikki patiently waiting back there. So, first of all, oh yeah, first of all, are there any speaker cards on items I1 or I2? Yes?
Yes, there is a speaker on item I2.
I'm sorry, missed that, on item I2? Correct. So this is the update on the Transportation Master Plan status. Speakers are up. Jen Woolison, followed by Adina Levin. And I'll also repeat, thank you guys for hanging in there. But it's before 11:00.
It felt like midnight at 8:00. I don't know, man. Thank you. I did not speak on the Complete Streets Commission, so I only am speaking three times tonight. But I am a member of the TMPOCC. I'm speaking just as myself, but I, I, I'm taking this oversight O of the OCC very seriously. And Tuesday, last Tuesday night's meeting was, was concerning, and I think a lot of people in the room were kind of just confused about the process and what we're going through and how it's being run. And really kind of connecting what the circulation element in Connect Menlo is with how the priorities and goals are being set in the Transportation Master Plan. You know, the Transportation Master Plan is one of your top goals of the year, and as a safe route advocate who's been wanting, you know, relief in many parts of the city, I've been told, you know, the Transportation Master Plan is coming, the Transportation Master Plan is coming, just wait. And so I'm taking this like really seriously of what is this Transportation Master Plan? And I just think there needs to be some clarification around what we're being asked to look at. You know, we were looking at flyovers and widening of Willow Road, and it wasn't clear, you know, why we were looking at these issues and how that was relating to the overall Transportation Master Plan. We have a limited number of meetings that were scheduled for. And just some recommendations that I have, because I want this to be as effective and useful as possible, you know, really clarify the process of the Transportation Master Plan. It seems a little bit like a black box right now. We would love to know, at least I would love to know, you know, how does the Transportation Master Plan fit within the context of other guiding principles and plans that have been set for the city? It'd be really helpful, I think, for the community if the deliverables for the Transportation Master Plan were provided in a timely manner, and really looking at the Redwood City Transportation Master Plan as a model for how they engage the community and what they were delivering. Seek higher-level input from the committee, and then apply that to some specific intersections. But I think there's, you know, limited time that you have this group of 11 people in the room, and really kind of using that time wisely. And then I'm also kind of concerned that there's no chair for this committee. The consultant is leading it. And, you know, this is an oversight committee that the community is overseeing, and I think we really need to consider having a citizen chair that can provide ongoing oversight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Adina Levin, followed by Cecilia Taylor.
Adina Levin, and I'm here reporting as a member of the Transportation Master Plan Committee representing the Complete Streets Commission, and I have a process point and then the content point to report. So the process point was that the staff report for this committee came out the day after the Complete Streets Commission met, and the Complete Streets Commission has a Transportation Master Plan Subcommittee for the very reason that, although I've been delegated to represent the commission, I feel, you know, more informed and have better perspective with several of my peers on that, on, on that Subcommittee, and then with discussion in the commission as a whole. And we didn't get a chance to, to do that. With a few days' notice, we were able to scramble and get a Subcommittee meeting beforehand to, you know, have some informed points of view, but it would have been better, and I think you would have gotten better advice if we had had a chance to review it as a commission and then feed that into the, the committee. And as for the substance, I think the staff report did a good job of capturing the feedback from that meeting, including with regard to Bayfront. There was a good number of comments that wanted to see the traffic congestion on Dumbarton and Bayfront be done with as many of the means that will increase person throughput and get cars off the road, as opposed to items that would potentially increase, driving increase the number of cars. And the consultant said that they looked at the water table and realized that in order to get the grade separations, they would need to raise Bayfront entirely and have it be like the Embarcadero Expressway, late un lamented, and would, the, the goal was to increase person throughput, not increase the number of cars. And then lastly, in terms of the Willow, there was a fair amount of sentiment to consider all of the new pedestrians and cyclists and more people using Willow as, you know, like as a street in the community, and, you know, keep those safety issues in mind and really do a lot of focus on that. Maintain bike facilities, don't take them away. You know, improve street crossing, don't make it harder. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adina. Cecilia?
Good evening again.
Not midnight yet. My comments about the Transportation Master Plan Committee, I actually went to the meeting. I was slightly disappointed because I was hoping to hear something about the Bellhaven traffic calming that I was told was supposed to be a part of it. When W-Trans came to the community to do a walkthrough, they actually came, I believe it was twice, and those were the words that were shared with us, is that, you know, this is what we're going to be looking at with this committee, is how we can do some traffic calming area that has talked about it for many, many years. And so I didn't hear anything about that when I went to the committee, so I'm just going to ask the question again, is where is the Bellhaven traffic calming, and when is it coming to the neighborhood? And I hope sooner than later.
Okay. Thank you, Cecilia. Okay.
Peter?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Carlton.
So I'm sure Kirsten would like to chime in on this, but I, I thought that of, out of, I agree with what was said. I think that I was most surprised because they, it seemed to be wrapping up as we were beginning. When, and, and it might just be a setting expectations for scope, because when I hear master plan, I'm thinking master plan. And really, it came down to us looking at two streets. Big streets, Willow and Bayfront, but nonetheless, two streets. And as I said, the discussion we had was, was a good discussion, but it wasn't the end. And we all lobbied that we needed more meetings. And I think we need to either rename it or rethink it, because what we're doing is good, but I wouldn't necessarily define it as a master plan, as, as was evidenced by what was, was said here. Does that make sense?
In fact, I'll come back to that in a second. Vice Mayor Mueller?
I heard resident, I heard Commissioner feedback that there actually, actually, the staff report actually didn't reflect some of the opinions that were expressed there, and I think they've emailed staff to that. So I actually would like to have this update and come back with those opinions put into it, because I don't know what they are, and it's a brown act for me to find out outside this meeting. The other thing is, and I appreciate this is a hard one for staff to deal, and I know you guys are doing a lot of work. That being said, there was, from what I've been explained, just general unhappiness with the consultant, the consultant work here. It felt, the word that I've been, is self-determinative. The process seems self-determined walking into the room. And, and, and not so. I, this is like one of the biggest projects that we have pending right now in the city. We've been talked about constantly for the last two years, any development, when the Transportation Master Plan comes, when the Transportation Master Plan comes, when the Transportation Master Plan comes. So for that first meeting, for folks to walk out with that, with that feeling, it's a little, makes me, makes me pretty nervous.
Okay, so I certainly understand the, the question about the scope is a very important one, because I, I know we have put a lot of expectations on this Transportation Master Plan over the course of the last year. I mean, it started from the, literally, the, the vote on the Connect Menlo project, and we're already talking about the Transportation Master Plan, and then we go into the goal setting, and I think we've put, we've put a lot in it. I think, so, so perhaps, if I may suggest, I mean, sort of clarify, I know, I know the one thing that we've always talked about, that, that the Transportation Master Plan is a, is certainly an opportunity to identify what are the major infrastructure, transportation infrastructure improvements, major, that would then inform and recalculate our transportation impact fee and update that. That then goes into the development discussions that we're going to have. So, so in my mind, major ticket quote-unquote items that could be, that affect the major roadways, Bayfront, grade separations on Bayfront, you know, Willow Road improvements should certainly be part of a Transportation Master Plan. But then, that now precludes, or I shouldn't say it precludes, but it takes up a lot of agenda time to cover those to the possible exclusion of some of the, you know, I would call it, you know, the, the neighborhood-specific traffic calming issues, whether it's Bellhaven or the Willows, or many other, other aspects. Is there, does that mean then we need more meetings, or, or we need to clarify the scope? Nikki, welcome your suggestions and insights. And first of all, I want to thank you, because I know your, your team is the point team and on this, and, and as you know, we certainly do look at the Transportation Master Plan as one of our top. our top priorities for this year. So, so I do want to say we, we support this effort. And so if there are additional capabilities or resources that, that you think are needed, we're certainly open to, to making sure that, that your team is successful in this, so.
Great, thank you. So I think, let me just start off by saying that we heard loud and clear the meeting was frustrating. The first meeting we had in October was also frustrating. These are very tough topics to wrap your head around, both from like a high-level policy direction as well as when the rubber meets the road and the actual recommendations we're making for infrastructure. And so we're trying to work through that process to find a way to make these, both the meetings go smoother as well as the, the materials the consultants are providing be more tangible and easy to interpret for folks because recognize that it's, it's very dense information that we're getting out to people. And even though, like the last meeting, we're publishing staff reports on a Thursday for a Tuesday night meeting, same schedule that you all have every, every week, every meeting, it's, it's dense information. And so we'll, we'll be trying to do our best to get that out with as much lead time as possible. But our challenge will be meeting the scheduled milestones that the council has set for us while still providing a robust enough community dialogue for the process to feel genuine. So I think where, where we kind of guided the meeting through the process last Tuesday was really focusing on these two corridors that we've had a lot of high-level discussion through, you know, the Samtrans-Dunbarton study, through Connect Menlo. But there hadn't been a really robust dialogue around what the infrastructure needs should be. And so that, that comes back to the, the dialogue that we had during the study session for the Facebook Willow Village earlier tonight. That was kind of the, the point that we wanted to really dig into those issues, have some, really, you know, the, the members of the OOC have very different viewpoints. I think that was by design on who the council appointed to that committee. And we, we heard some of those differing viewpoints last, last week. So I think while we understand the meeting was frustrating, I think it did give us a lot of really good feedback on those issues. And so what we had recommended in the staff report before you tonight is actually moving one of the OOC meetings that was going to target on the impact fee discussion, moving that up in the, the process. We don't think that the OOC's feedback would be as useful in the fee program as it would be on these recommendations. And so we're trying to now schedule another meeting to review, we'll call the citywide recommendations that would then start to focus on more of the local issues related to some of the feedback that we heard. But I do want to provide one point of clarification related to traffic calming. And so we have two specific traffic calming plans also lined up for, for preparation in the, the coming year. So that's the Bellhaven Traffic Calming Plan that was a mitigation measure from the Facebook campus expansion that's under construction right now. And then the Willow's Neighborhood Complete Streets Study, which looks at traffic calming and cut-through issues as well as safe routes to school issues for the Laurel Upper Campus. Those recommendations are much more granular than what the TMP will, will give us at the end of the day. So we were not scoped as part of the Transportation Master Plan to do that detailed cut-through analysis for each individual neighborhood in the city, but we will be making some broader recommendations around dealing with some of the, the more specific issues that the city has control over, Willow and Middlefield, Middlefield, Ravenswood, some of the other issues across the city. So I hope that starts to clarify some of the scope questions that we heard, the next steps. If there are other questions, we're happy to, to take those as well.
Okay. The other question that I had was the point about the further concerns raised about the ability to fund both major highway and transit improvements along the Bayfront and Dunbarton corridors. Due to these concerns, staff will direct W Trans team to not pursue further plans for grade separations and freeway-type improvements. And I'm a little nervous about that. I wasn't there, and I certainly know that there are concerns over anything that, that sounds like a flyover. You know, there, we've heard that certainly loud and clear. On the other hand, we also, when we were going through the Connect Menlo process, I know Vice Mayor Mueller and I were both, you know, certainly concerned about, about the quote-unquote "cut-through" traffic from Dunbarton on Willow and trying to see if we can keep that traffic on Bayfront and, and improving the connection between Bayfront to Marsh to 101. So, so I get concerned if that's not going to, if they're not going to pursue plans when I sort of see that as an important aspect, given the, the potential growth project I see in front of me and, and that were contemplated around Connect Menlo. So, but again, I wasn't in the meeting. So, so how do we reconcile some of that? I don't want to, you know, be, be in the position of the council saying, no, 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 we got to, you know, overrule you on this. But, but how do we get more info, I guess, is, you know, and balance that, I guess?
Yeah, and quite honestly, that's exactly why we wanted to put this before you tonight because I think that this has been a contentious point for a number of the, the last few years. And so wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the direction that, what we heard from the, the Outreach and Oversight Committee as well as the direction we were planning to go moving forward based on that feedback. So I think what W Trans analysis had, had shown, what they did was start from the Samtrans-Dunbarton corridor recommendations, looked at those alternatives, and then tried to flush them out a bit further related to our local context. And so the information that they presented to the, the committee was still, while very detailed, was still pretty high-level in terms of the concept designs that were developed. But I think one of our speakers noted, they did do some civil engineering investigation into the ability to do any grade separations below ground and, and raised some pretty significant concerns with, with that related to the, the water table as well as sea, excuse me, the, the infiltration of, of water from the, the bay underneath the ground which fluctuates with the tide. So we essentially have to be constantly pumping water out of any lowered infrastructure along the Bayfront corridor. So that was one challenge. That means any freeway-type improvements, grade separations has to be above ground, which we had heard through the Samtrans process as well as last week, a lot of residual concerns around any aerial structures particularly at the corner of, of Bayfront and Willow. The other conflict or issue that, that we raised was related to the implementation of managed lanes or a direct connector from Bayfront to the Marsh interchange. The concepts that Samtrans laid out eliminate local access at several of the signalized intersections that exist on Bayfront corridor. So that's Chrysler Drive as well as the new signals serving the Facebook campus at Buildings 20 and 21. Excuse me. Could also eliminate partial access at Bayfront or Willow, given the spacing of the two intersections, they don't meet Caltrans standards to be able to grade separate both of those with full interchanges. And so we presented that information to the, the committee, and that's where we started to hear some, some concerns about the viability, feasibility of, of those concepts related to the impact that they would have on, on local traffic as well. So those are some of the, the issues, the conflicts that, that we were trying to work through. That said, would definitely like to, to welcome your, your feedback about how, how we should move forward.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Klein?
Thanks, Nikki. These are always going to be hard and consultants are always going to be. It's, it's a tough life, right, for the consultants in these conditions? We've seen it a lot of times. You know, this is, it's so, it's so broad-reaching that I think that when I was looking at what was coming back, I thought maybe there'll be the macro kind of long-term kind of discussions, which would be Dunbarton rail, you know, big people-moving infrastructure things, grade separations, things like that, which includes any variety. Expansion freeways, overpass, these things that are significantly long-term, big infrastructure. And then the micro would be, you know, more of the inner-city type things like, you know, alignment of intersection, you know, lights and, you know, you know, speed abatements or traffic pattern analysis to help neighborhoods and safe routes. And then you have these ideas, of course, that you're always going to get from everybody, you know, who puts some time in on this, whether it's ride-sharing, you know, power off of collaboration on what they do, roundabouts things. But, but there, then it becomes a, so what, it's almost like the micro is the short-term. What are these short-term things we can do? And then what are the long-term things that we can talk about, but we need to put somewhere, you know, and continue to talk about, but let's get on these ones that we need to execute. And I think some of that would be just local neighborhood, you know, analysis, patterns and things. And the problem is when, when a consultant goes and brings back the data, it's not exactly going to follow, you know, community sentiment. It's going to follow whatever the data says, and it's going to come back, and then that's what happened, right? There's, here's four roads that have major problems, and it's not one of these that we've been talking about, you know, in terms of traffic, you know, accidents and things. And so I think you got to, got to figure out with the committee how you force-feed areas that you think are priorities based on what you get feedback from council and staff, and you do your best. But, you know, I think it's just, it's, it's one of those classic cases of once this thing goes sideways, it's like being off just a little bit, and then the more meetings you have, the farther off you are until you're in the middle of the ocean, you know? And I think it, it probably has to be reset somehow just to look at it from, how do we bring these elements back in and start simplifying some of the solutions that we can have a discussion about? I just don't know any other way around it than that. I'm kind of resetting it, but, you know, haven't been on these, they can go awry quickly.
Yeah, I'm also looking at the paragraph where you're talking about the different schedules and the, the scope of work called for four committee meetings during the course of project, three of which on plan development, one on the fee scale, fee schedule. And that now you're currently contemplating the potential of using all four meetings on plan development. As I'm, you know, hearing this and discussing it, I mean, I don't even know whether four is enough. When I look at how many, you know, meetings we had in Connect Menlo, it was 60-something, but, and so I guess I, I'd like to, to suggest, you know, giving, giving you the latitude to consider, you know, potentially more meetings. I know that's going to require an additional budget for this. And I also, and I also know that this is going to impact the schedule. So, you know, on that, on the one hand, I'm trying to get us as far along in 2018 as we can on this. Give me some...
If, if I can just make a recommendation here, just because this was an info item, not necessarily a policy item for conversation, why don't I regroup with Public Works, with Nikki and Justin? And let's sort of, and I might circle back with the two council members who are also appointed to this committee, just to perhaps better understand if there are those kinds of concerns. Our biggest concern, this was the number one major priority for the council a year and a half ago now, if not almost two years ago now, and we want to be responsive. On the other hand, we, we need to make sure we do the work right. And if the committee is feeling misunderstood or their, their role is not, not clarified, perhaps we can, I don't know if a reset button is the right term, but let us see if there's something we can do to help refocus this again and get this back on track. I think, I think it was Jen Wilson who made the suggestion, maybe there should be a chair and perhaps one of the, the way Councilmember Mueller and, excuse me, Vice Mayor Mueller and Mayor Otaki served as the kind of co-chairs of Connect Menlo, perhaps we can look at Councilmember Carlton and Councilmember Keith with perhaps serving in some sort of co-chair role as well. But let me sit down with staff and see if we can, see what we can do to, I don't want to say put this back on track, I don't want to suggest it's not on track, but let, let us have a conversation.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yeah, I am, so I am, because the report came to us with some policy questions internal, excuse me, stupid thing in my mouth, with some policy questions included there. I would like it come, to come to us on issues like that because very frankly, I don't understand how we can get this to work if we can't get the valves open for the water to flow through freely, right? Like, I'm looking at this and what, what you just reported back to me is that we won't be able to get, we're not going to be able to improve Bayfront, so it's open valves all the way to the freeway? And we certainly can't do that with Willow now. So how do you make, how do you add that much more water to the pipes with stop valves if you, if you're not going to make an improvement to make it flow freely? I don't, I'm really concerned now. And if there's going to be a policy question that, well, we're just not going to do it, or if it's a policy question, well, we can do it, but this is how we do it, I want to make sure council weighs into that during this process.
And that was really, and I think Nikki said this earlier, that was the exact reason this is before you tonight, is that there was a concern that particularly the Connect Menlo leaders, you and, excuse me, Mueller and Otaki, but the balance of the council as well, making sure, you heard, the committee's kind of going this direction. We don't want to give you something that's so far afield from what the, what you had perhaps expected.
Thank you.
But like I said, let me work with Justin and Nikki again, excuse me, Justin and Nikki again over the next week or two to figure out how to get this back in front of you guys again.
I just want to make sure that we know, that we agree even, on what we want to get out of this. Because we can have all the meetings in the world, but if we're not agreed on, are we looking at a major structural plan that's going to move the traffic? That's what I hear coming from Vice Mayor Mueller. Is that what we're looking at?
I think the, the highest priority of the Transportation Master Plan is to, is to look at those improvements that will then reset the, the fee schedule. Because the fee schedule is how you pay for it, right? And, I mean, while incremental changes are important, I think this is an opportunity to look at potentially significant changes. And, and if we don't, if we don't do it now, I mean, you know, this is, this is the, I don't know how often you do Transportation Master Plans, but I, I certainly haven't seen it in my seven years on the council.
So, so getting back to, to my clarification, so you guys are talking about major structural infrastructure to, to move cars out of the way. That's your understanding. I also know that other people, their understanding was that we were going to put together a citywide safe route to school bicycle plan. And another person thought, you know, they're, they're three different animals, you know, someone else thought that this was going to be a plan for a specific neighborhood. And that's where I think the frustration comes in, is managing expectations.
And the scope.
And, and the scope. And being able to come back and say, this specifically is what this group is for. That's, this is, you know, however, you haven't, this is what we're doing. Because there is a vast chasm between what different people that's sitting at the table expect to produce for council. So I think council needs to be very clear on getting back to them and saying, this is document A, and maybe we'll have five rounds of this, but in this round, this is what we want to see produced. And then I think there's more clarity on what we're doing. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I keep saying that.
I concur with council, with Mayor Otaki. I mean, we kicked the can down on how we're going to pay for infrastructure improvement through the Transportation Master Plan with some assumptions that there would be, you'd be able to do certain things. If we're not going to be able to do certain things, we need to find out right away. And it sounds like we're starting to get reports back that we're not going to be able to do certain things from engineers involved in it, so.
And this is not to say that traffic calming and those others and, and safe routes aren't important projects. We in fact put safe routes as one of our top six projects for this year. So the question is whether, you know, some of the, the traffic study work will help to inform it and to what extent we can make sure that those concerns are addressed as part of the other projects that I think Nikki mentioned, you know, the Bellhaven Traffic Calming and also the Willows, I, I cut through control project or however we're defining, naming it, to make sure that those concerns are addressed in the, in the, in a reasonably expedient, you know, fashion, even if they're not captured in the transportation master plan.
Now, safe routes to school was something that we listed as an important project and so that would be a separate project then.
Right, right. But I do remember that there's some parallel.
There's some, I was just saying, there's something that goes hand in hand.
And there's transfer of info and there's, you know, back and forth, but that they are separate but parallel projects.
Right. So the, the Safe Routes to School Citywide Program that the council prioritized through the, the work plan development and the, the goal setting will be focused more on education, encouragement programs, more, more programmatic level recommendations, as well as giving us maps that we can distribute to schools, to parents about which routes to take. So again, more of an, an encouragement tool than the identification of all the engineering issues that we'd want to be updating over the life of the plan. Well, I do want to take a minute to, to clarify because I think one other objective of the master plan was to update both our bicycle and sidewalk master plans for the city. And so we are, W-Trans is actively working with a subconsultant to do that work. We have a multiple hour meeting scheduled later this week to review some of those early recommendations to make sure that we have all the issues that staff is tracking identified through that process. So those citywide recommendations are part of the master plan work that we're, we're doing. But what the, the OOC saw in this first meeting was, was just the slice of the improvement recommendations and options for the Bayfront and Willow corridors. So the next step will be looking at those more citywide recommendations that will start to capture some of those more incremental improvements that we were, were looking at across the city. But because the Bayfront and Willow corridors were so high priority coming out of these, these other discussions that we've had over the last few years, we teed that, that up first, thinking that if we don't resolve these issues, it's going to be much harder to move on to more of the low hanging fruit within the city's control. That calculation may have been backwards for, for the, the group that, that we have on the, the committee for, for the time being. So I think the next meeting will be a good chance to check in on some of the other issues and the, the more broad citywide improvement recommendations that, that we're hearing the desire to see.
Okay. And I also do like the idea of having councilmembers Carlton and Keith as the co-chairs. I think that did seem to work well when we were doing Connect Menlo because either of us could kind of step in and move, help the agenda, you know, sort of keep, keep things on, on track and, and in effect assist in it. And I, I think we were productive in that process, so, so certainly encourage that.
So I, I just have to clarify and, and if, if I misunderstood, I apologize, but when we were voting on safe route to school, so I'm a protective mom, you can educate me all you want. If I don't think the streets are safe, I'm not going to let my kids ride their bike, period. And making me and, and many other people feel that their kids are safe riding their bike involves laying out paths and putting in bike lanes and actually doing a master plan for bicycles. And I think that's what most, I think that's what a lot of people think of when you talk about safe route to school is actually making safe routes, not the education part. And I haven't seen what you're doing with the education part, so maybe this is all together, but I, I, I don't want us to go too far into just the education and not really looking at how we can make the roads safer for children, how we can put in the, the bike lanes and really actively work on putting together the routes.
Can I suggest that perhaps that be another, an information item on a, on a future, well, future, because of the lateness tonight? I, I share your, your question on what is in safe routes, what, what will be included. Do you think it makes sense for us to have a, an information item similar to this, but on safe routes at, at a upcoming meeting? And then that way we can spend a little more time on it? Because I certainly know that, that, I mean, there have been various petitions made on particular, you know, crosswalks, particular spots, so there's already some gathered information that, that, that could help flow into the safe routes. But I don't think now's the time to talk about it tonight. Would that be possible to have an information item and then we can discuss it further?
Yes, we could, we could bring back an informational item. We're also working through a consultant selection process and so before the end of the fiscal year, we were targeting to bring back a contract award for, for the council to, to approve. So that could be another, just check in on, on the contract. But if you'd like something sooner than that, than an info item would be.
I think that might be helpful because there is this question of scope and what's in it and, and it's come up a couple of times. I think that would be useful to have that because I, I shared some of the questions you have. So with that, I think, thank you.
Apologize, can I ask just one clarifying question? I think Vice Mayor Mueller had, had described some committee members that had provided feedback that some of the summary of the meeting was not in line with their, their recollection. So I think that's not feedback that's come to staff, at least as of six o'clock today. So if there is any concern that we summarize incorrectly, just encourage that to, to come back to us, because we hadn't heard that yet.
I'm told that there were conversations with Kevin by at least two committee members today.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll check in with Kevin tomorrow.
And I was copied on some of that. I'll make sure you know.
Okay.
Who to follow up with too.
Great, thank you.
Okay. No city managers report, any council member reports for this evening? Okay. So I think with, oh yes.
I did, I did want to ask, someone mentioned, I think it was Menlo Spark, Assemblymember Ting has a bill that on electric cars. And I'll send you the information. It would be interesting for us to, to have a look at that.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Thank you everyone. Good night. This meeting is adjourned.